Planner Greve will provide his monthly update to the council regarding applications pending before the planning board, applications that will be coming before you in the coming months, and then any other items coming out of his office. We'll hold council roundtable, and then I will call for a brief closed session to discuss real estate matters and negotiations with the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't need to approve the agenda, so, right, we'll just move on to action items?
That's fine.
Okay, perfect. All right, looking over the application for the LGC, is there any discussion, or are you all okay with making a motion?
I had one question on this one. There was a whereas or therefore comment in here that we would not need to raise taxes to meet the demand anticipated under the loan. Is that just based on general projections, or where did that come from?
... that is essentially along the lines of, do you immediately need to raise taxes? Where that relies for
Those obligations will kind of be part of discussions we have as we're looking at
That is correct. I will say that I do not anticipate in any way, shape, or form, based upon the RFP that was put out for installment financing, that we would be back before the council asking that you raise the current tax rate in the current fiscal year. Obviously, as part of budgeting come fiscal year 27, we will be having a discussion around tax rates and all of the costs and debts that the town have. And on top of that, remember that fiscal year 27 will represent some sort of adjustment to the tax rate based upon the revaluation the county will be undertaking as they do every four years.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Is there a motion to authorize staff to file the application with the LGC?
I'll move to approve the application with the LGC as presented.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the MAPP-02-24, the written decision for Murray Hill Townhomes. Are you all comfortable with the written decision representing what we discussed?
Just my customary question, was the applicant provided a copy of the written decision before today?
The applicant was provided a written copy of the decision before today and has approved the conditions as written.
Right.
This may not be the right time to bring it up, but I would be really interested in the percentage of, you know, pursuant to the condition one, preserve the natural character. I'd be super interested in how many trees come down and what percentage of the trees are saved. So if I can give you just a heads up on that, I'll be asking that question later.
Would you, we could bring that back to you when, that will not be known until, probably until they get to site plan
Right.
approval, possibly just after that when they get to clearing. We can, we can just make a note on that project file to bring that back to the town council when it happens.
I would just be, I'd love an update at that point, yeah, when it's convenient for you, that'd be great. And I think that would be a really good idea for us to begin collecting data similar to that regarding all these projects, so. Thank you.
I move to approve MAPP-02-24 written decision for Murray Hill Townhomes.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Well, I'm always confused when I'm opposed to the project, but I'm not really opposed to the final order.
That's all right. Do you agree with everything that was written, reflects what we discussed?
Yeah, I think it does.
And I think you can vote with it.
Yeah, so I think, yeah.
Okay, so that is unanimously
I think, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you. All right, the other written decision is SU-01-25 for Tyler Shrage Lot 9. Were you going to ask your question?
Yes, it was.
Are there other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to our public hearings, we have OA-02-25, the public hearing that was opened August 12th regarding amendments to our unified development ordinance, and we continue it to this meeting. Director Greve, do you have anything for us? Updates, changes?
I have no updates, no changes, other than to mention that at the last meeting, I sort of neglected to mention that what was part of the advertised text amendment was also changes to UDO appendices, specifically Appendix B, wherein the town engineer is proposing to remove a number of forms that are currently in Appendix B, but these are administrative forms that don't need to be part of the appendices, because if the form needs to get changed, then that, this is, we don't put our forms in the regulations. The forms are just administrative documents that reflect the regulations that are contained within the code. So he, in addition to the changes to the UDO that were related to the sign code, this was just something that was pending that needed to be looked at, and so it is the second part of that text amendment. Again, it was advertised, it's just as part of my verbal presentation at the public hearing earlier this month, I sat down before mentioning that because I was focused on the sign code.
All right, council, do you have other feedback on the amendments? Or discussion? Do you all feel comfortable with them as proposed?
Yeah, so I appreciate the effort and time y'all put into this. It's tedious, but it's important, so thank you.
If I may, along those lines, take a moment to say thank you to Mac for his help with this project and to our consulting attorney, David Owens, for his assistance with this project. This was more work than it looks like on these pages, because it was just trying to get it right for constitutionality purposes, and try to get it right based on case law, and trying to work different sign codes. So I really want to say thank you to the two of them who put a lot of time into this to help staff prepare this, so thank you.
Okay, if there is a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion that we approve OA-02-25, the amendments to the UDO.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, capital projects update. Reagan, it's us back to you.
I think Jessica was running with this one, unless I am wrong. Yes.
Okay. We have both assistant town managers and our Parks and Rec Director.
This is gonna be fun.
Just grab an extra chair up there.
You know who we're starting with? Whitehall. Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, we have an update on the Whitehall Carriage House that, fortunately, it's not the best update that we'd like to share, but we do have a path forward, we believe. Hopefully, you have seen that the building renovation itself has been complete. We've finished that contract work, and the carriage house looks beautiful, both inside and out. If you recall, we did receive a grant from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It was $185,000 grant, which covered about half of the renovation cost of that building. And that grant was time-bound. We had to complete that work by the end of last calendar year. So in order to meet those timing deadlines, we ended up having to split the overall carriage project site into two different phases. We just weren't ready with all of the site plans, and we weren't ready to bid that out. So we just hired, you know, a contractor, a building contractor. So we finished the site plans and have bid those out twice now. They went out to bid in May, and the first time we received no bids. We called some contractors and got, you know, various reasonings. None of it was around the scope or anything like that, or that people didn't want to bid, or that they thought our expectations were unrealistic. It's just, I mean, one, people are just very busy right now, and it's also not that large of a project. So, so we were hopeful that some people might bid again. Per state law, we did bid it out again a second time in June. The second bid yielded one bid from Sand Hills Contractors, and that was for $1.1 million, which was essentially twice what our cost estimate from 2023 was. So again, we have requirements under state law that we have to do in that case, which essentially requires us to try to negotiate with the bidder to see if we can make some headway. So, two weeks ago, Greg, as well as Graham Purcell, our Parks and Ground Superintendent, they met with Sand Hills Contractors, and they essentially told us that there's really a lack of competition from contractors who do this scale of scope, which isn't surprising. And, you know, they just didn't really have a lot of flexibility numbers-wise on, you know, really much ability to make some adjustments. And so we weren't able to make a whole lot of headway. I mean, it wasn't a bad conversation, but, you know, their numbers are what their numbers are. And so, so we weren't able to renegotiate that contract to where staff feels comfortable recommending it. It ended up coming down to about $956,000 before the bid bond. So
Can you, can you give us a quick overview of what is on the site plan? Is that the putting the road in?
Yes. Yes. So, yeah, good question. So it essentially, this phase of the site plan starts at Elizabeth Rounds Park, and the goal is to install a new one-way road that goes from Elizabeth Rounds and then curves around in front of the carriage house. We will be paving just that part of the road for fire truck access, that's a fire code requirement. And then we'll have kind of a small roundabout turnaround that the fire trucks can turn around, and they can then leave the site going back out through Elizabeth Rounds, where typical customers, customers, visitors would then continue on down the driveway and enter back out on the other, where people now tend to come in off of PD. The other site work that's included, which is all part of code as well, it's a very small parking lot, gravel parking lot. It also has brick patios and some sidewalks. Essentially, it's all just dirt, you know, as soon as you walk outside of the carriage house now. We left all of that site work, and so, you know, we can't get a certificate of occupancy like that. And so, so we need to do these basic things in order to be able to get that and make the building publicly accessible. So, there's also, you know, your core site infrastructure, there's a little bit of utility work. We've already installed the new water line and tied that into the system, but there's some stormwater infrastructure and some minor things like that. Is there anything else that?
No, I mean, it's patio work, brick work, you pretty much said it all.
Yeah.
A lot of the stuff internally that we've already completed has been done by Darren's team, like you said.
Right.
The water connections are done. You know, adjacent to the carriage house, they've provided electrical outlets for future work that needs to be done, so things like that have already been pre-prepped, so.
And that, that work is only, you know, the phased work to get the carriage house open. It's not trails or anything like that. So, after meeting with Sand Hills Contractors, our team, I mean, we've been meeting several times, but we've regrouped, and our recommendation is that the town serve as the general contractor, and that would probably be, you know, kind of a combination of Greg, Graham, Darren Johnson. I mean, they do this type of thing for other smaller projects. Some of the work we can do in-house ourselves, some of the smaller things. And then what they would like to do, what they recommend doing, is that then we just hire the individual subcontractors and sequence the work. You know, there's some clearing work, there's some grading work, and we just bring them on one by one. And we've had some preliminary conversations, we do know, we use contractors like this all the time, and they are interested. You know, we don't have bids yet because we've had to follow these state purchasing laws, but we would continue to follow those, you know, in this manner as well. So once we start to identify those individual contracts, we would have a better idea of where we would land, you know, for this total phase. We certainly expect, we'd better be doing it for way less than $956,000.
That's what all of us wanted to hear.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Do you all need authorization from us to move forward on, on us timing up the project on our own?
No, actually, we really don't. The main reason we wanted to update you is, one, we've kind of hit this roadblock here, and this is our recommended path forward. We did, out of respect to Santos Contractors and the state laws, you know, had we moved forward, you would have had to formally vote on it because it was a formal bid. So we wanted to let you know that our recommendation is that you don't award this bid, just so it's on the record that we're, because the bid expires 60 days, which is this week, so.
Well, I appreciate their honesty and that there's not much competition, but I don't think that the, the 1.1 million down to $950 odd is enough for us to, to approve it, so. Do you all need us to vote not to accept it?
I've talked with Mac about that, and we don't feel it needs a formal vote, so, just out of transparency, we wanted you to know.
As much as anything, it'll be on the record that it was brought before council, and it was not ultimately accepted.
I do have one question regarding the road and the fire truck access. Is, is all-weather surface required, or can it be a road-based situation?
So as we've had discussions before, all-weather surface is required in the fire code for any commercial building, and that is something we require with, with any and all new development. Now, there's a couple ways to get to that point. Typically, it is pavement. There are some testing things that you can do, but the soils have got to be right, and you got to have, to have an engineer, an outside engineer, sign off on that. So that is something that's required to get to any and all commercial buildings, and we're applying the exact same thing
Yeah.
to our, to the town
I get it.
that we would do anybody else.
So the, so the engineering regarding not doing an all-weather surface is just basically certifying, like, compaction of the road and
That's, that's correct. It's going to be soil samples, we'll evaluate those, and we'll come back, and an engineer signs off on it and says, yep, this will, this will hold imposed loads of fire apparatus, or no, it won't.
With, with like, like, with
They, they will, they will, yeah, they would give us some standards to say, hey. And so you, you could do that. That is within the fire code and within our limits, but as a reminder, that is not what we typically apply to.
Yeah, I get it. The only thing I'm thinking about, though, is that if that is better than what you currently have, it's also step one of doing this anyway.
Is it an upgrade? Absolutely.
It's an upgrade, and it has to be done to put asphalt anyway. So it's like, the money thing, if it's like, we do this, and the next year we look at resurfacing, the road base is there. I just, I don't know what it means for cost, but it's just an option to consider possibly.
I would think that's obviously something we'll take into consideration at the staff level.
Right.
It may offer us the ability, you know, right now, it's a very, very, do you remember the length of either of you? It's, I mean, it's very minimal.
The length of road?
Yeah, and partly, we literally did it the minimum amount that you needed for fire truck access to, you know, for cost purposes, but because of that, you know, we're not getting cost efficiencies to build it. So perhaps by sequencing it, maybe it can come, become part of our road resurfacing contract, you know, and we might be able to add it on. So those are things that we're going to look at, too, so.
Actually, that's a good point, and you could do it, just phase it, it's like what I was talking about.
Yeah, because step one is obviously to do any necessary clearing and get yourself a base before, before you even did any of your geotechnical testing. You've got to get up to a point anyhow, and the suggestion was that when we go to do our larger $1.2 million paving contract
There will be more interest
Exactly.
in all of that
Exactly.
versus just this.
Right, because it's similar to a small segment that we might do in a neighborhood, and it's just one more, so. Yeah.
So I love the group that you mentioned. Greg, and I think James was mentioned in there, and Graham was mentioned in there, and clearly you're mentioned in there. Is there anybody, if we have a question from a constituent or a question ourselves about this as it proceeds, is there an identified project manager within the team, or is it the team acting as a group project manager?
So, right now, how we have managed this is Greg is the identified project manager, but any one of us would be happy to answer any questions from anybody, but he could be the first contact.
Okay.
If you have a specific question getting with either Jessica or I, because we're going to know whether it's going to be a Greg or a Graham.
Our Graham question, right.
Exactly.
Or a James question, or who, yeah, okay. Who's on first? Yeah, got it. Great, thank you, Greg. This is, it was probably not in your job description when you signed on.
Nah, it was, it was under that other duties as assigned.
Other duties, yeah, we appreciate you.
Yeah, no, this was kind of one of his first capital projects, and I said, now I'm going to kind of stay in the background and help you, and then it turned out to, oh, we had to bid it out twice, and we had to do this.
But I do think it's a great solution, I think it's a really practical solution and a great crew, and I applaud you for being adaptable. That's great. So, thanks, Greg.
Thank you. What's the next, next project on your list?
We got Downton Park, or do you have the block first?
All right.
All right. The one that we all agree on so easily.
Yes, yes, so.
Go ahead. So, we're going to pick up right where we left off a month ago.
It had to have been two months ago. I was like, it's been a while.
It's been a while. Obviously, I'm sure that you have all went and taken a look at the park. You know that we've got, we have got, we gave you four options last time, which BJ is kind of scrolling through. You kind of know what it looks like now, you kind of know it looks like it needs some work. This was originally identified as part of our paving project through our streets department, they were going to go in and repave that. When we started talking about, we had some discussion about, hey, this could be done, it can be done exactly the same, or we have the opportunity to do some things a little different here. So there's two actual projects internal to the park. One is to do something in this area, and there's $125,000 set aside for that. Another part of that is, in a separate budget, is some, we were going to redo some of the irrigation. There's another $50,000 for that, so we've got some money set there aside. If you remember, if I recall correctly, the fourth option was the most expensive and is actually outside that budget. But I didn't get a really good one, fuzzy about that option either, so. You're here to have discussions, or answer questions, or go back to the drawing room, if that's what you choose.
Could I forward you the email about the fountain? Somebody wants a fountain. It's fine, I, it's actually a really cool picture that you put together, so I'll show you, or bring it up.
It's that email.
We're going to put it right here, though, that's perfect.
As an add-on to one of these options, or something completely different?
But that was the, that's the location that the person picked out, it's
So not a splash pad? A fountain?
You could jump in it, you wouldn't want to. No, no, it's not that big. But it has a pine cone in it, it actually, it looked really cool, it was, you gotta love AI. All right, council, conversations, shall we number these before we get too far on this conversation? So this is as-is. Which means that number one would be
Scroll to the bottom, BJ. So, there's number one, what we deemed as number one, which is, you picked up a couple of parking spaces with that, and it, and as I know you guys know, when you go by the park, there are quite a few people that are parking in that area. So, that's option one.
Option two?
50% more parking places.
Was more like a drive?
I can't even remember, what was the purpose of this one? Like, why would they, if it's not parking?
This is no parking, our staff still has to have access, so we're still driving through there.
Okay.
So, we've got bollards for, you know, we got to get vehicles in and out for farmers' market. We don't anticipate that going anywhere, obviously. So you still have to have access.
Could it drive on the grass on that next option? Like vehicles?
So this, and this picture is actually a moundable curb, so once you get in there, you can drive over the curb. What was option three, BJ?
Option two.
That's which would be, you'd still have the farmer's market, obviously a little bit more difficult. And we'd, yeah, we'd extend the irrigation, but that, you would, you would just drive across the grass.
Just curious, Mike
Yes, ma'am.
for the option one with the parking spaces, is there still enough room to drive through then to?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. The, and down here, you can't see it really good, there is an opening there that wouldn't leave there for staff to go in and out of there, because they are in and out of there a few times a week.
And last one was?
And option four?
Who would like to start off, I mean, shall we eliminate one at a time? Because this conversation's, I don't want to take two and a half hours again. What would you think?
Pretty consistent with the way it was the first time. I kind of like either keeping the parking at option one or nothing, which is option three. The, the road, to me
That one?
I get the point of not What's that?
But it's not that helpful, it's not worth doing
No.
if you can create parking spots.
It's to, it's to, you, you got to drive off somewhere, so I feel like if you're gonna, if you're gonna do this option to keep trucks from wearing the grass out when you turn off the road, it's going to happen at the very end. Or maybe on the, I guess if you're doing the moundable curb, that everybody would have to go over the moundable curb in a different place.
Yeah.
To, to keep the grass. So one or three for me, and I'm not, I know you had some concerns about kids and parking that were valid, I think, on option one.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea, like, yes, we could use the parking, but it's, you're putting, it's the idea of putting parking exactly where the kids are, just was a safety issue.
Yeah.
That's okay. And, and did you have a specific, do you like one or two?
So I, I actually was strongly option four until BJ showed us the photo from Longleaf.
Yeah.
Run through it, because I think the permeable pavers have such an environmental hoarded tit cry about them. And like the mayor mentioned, I know that when we have a heavy rain, we have a pretty big mud puddle, a pretty big water puddle down there. It's usually not mud, it's usually a puddle, so. So I think that the maintenance that might need to go with that is a problem, or, or that was a bad example of someone who's not maintaining permeable pavers. But I was, I was liking the fact that we tipped our hat to My question regarding just going with the grass is damage to irrigation system and wear and tear on the grass, and, and I'd like your thoughts on that. My question regarding option one is, and on a 95-degree day, is it not possible to look at a lighter concrete, a white concrete? Is there, I don't know, I'm not a concrete specialist, and maybe somebody else is, but I would rather not have a black concrete that makes it, a 95-degree day turn into a 120-degree area. And so, those are, those are my questions.
That's a lot of questions.
That was a lot of questions. You want to go through option?
So, let me throw out a couple things. So first of all, if we're going to be driving back and forth on grass, you're going to get wearing grass.
Right.
We're not, we're not going to stop that.
Right.
But that's an option, we can have more grass. That may fill some needs, but you're going to have spots where grass doesn't grow, especially with people entering and leaving those spots.
Right, and the damage to irrigation would be another concern.
So the, so the damage to irrigation is not as big of a concern as you would think, because it is designed to be in the ground. Remember, we have irrigation out there now, and we allow the farmer's market
To drive on.
to drive out there as it is. Don't have a specific instance, but there's no doubt in my mind, our heads get ran over on a regular basis. And we do occasionally have some damage, but, but it's not nearly as much as you would think. So I don't think staff is, is as concerned about that as you might, would think they would be. So I think those two things are answered. As far as the color, there is a significant cost difference when we talk about paving. We're talking about doing asphalt, it's what we typically do for all of our roads, and that's what the street department manages, is asphalt.
Right.
Concrete is going to be an increased price, and that's where you're going to get those different colors, a lighter color, so we're talking about
Is it twice as much, is it four times as much, do we have any?
That's difficult to say, I would say concrete is one of the things a little, little bit more volatile, depending on the time of year and what all's going around you. But it, it is significantly more than
It has been the same price before, actually.
It, it, you're right. It depends on the market at the time, you're right.
Right.
Concrete, is it, when, when the season changes, it ends up with cracks and things more easily, is that right?
That can be true, depending on
It moves.
It, it does, it flexes and moves.
Okay.
It could turn into an art project, like the, like the crosswalk, too, that was just painted.
Right.
The whole parking lot.
Right.
Yeah.
There's stickers. All right. Okay, but pavers is off your priority list, is that right?
I don't know, I don't know that pavers is off my priority list. If, I guess the other thing, just from an environmental standpoint, is there a way to monitor or to, to, to have maintenance on pavers that does not create the problem that we saw? Or is that by far the most expensive option, I would think?
As of the options we have up here, that is the most expensive option.
The permeability is really appealing to me.
I will tell you that BJ and I, and we've looked at two different locations that have pavers, and they serve a surface and they serve a surface, they serve a purpose of getting vehicles back and forth across, and it works great. But in my opinion, both of them look similar. It was a little bit spotty.
Overrun.
It just was overrun in both occasions. BJ, you agree with that?
So your assessment of pavers is it's going to look sloppy?
I didn't say that.
It just requires more maintenance.
It does require more maintenance.
Higher cost of maintenance, I think.
It's going to require a lot of maintenance.
Right. Okay, and I'm, you know, and I, and I.
With asphalt or even concrete, once we put it down, we're not doing a lot of maintenance to that. Doesn't require.
It's okay. Why don't we, if you want to keep thinking, let's work our way down the line, and then we'll come back through each of them. I was like, I don't think we're, we're not making any decisions real quick here. Pro Tim Pete, how do you feel about the options?
So along the lines of Brandon, if I had to pick two, it'd be one or three. But I still lean towards number one, because we're not adding pavement. We're just putting pavement where pavement already was. Two, again, I said this last time, just downtown spots have been at a premium, especially, it was a big item of discussion several years ago. I do like in the picture, part of what makes that more appealable is sort of the landscaped edging between the grass and the lot. So assuming that that's somewhat indicative of what it would look like, I just, I think if I'd pick one, it's number one.
All right, Ms. Gray.
I hate to be a copycater, like I tell one of my students today, but I kind of agree with Bill as well as Brandon. I liked one and three, but I think if we were talking about three, there'd be a little bit more maintenance that would be necessary to really just keep the grass looking right. So I, I think I lend myself more toward number one.
I guess I'm also assuming, maybe, maybe ask this. I know that there's already stormwater in that current lot, that when this thing's re, if it's, if this is where it goes and it's redone, it'll be graded in a way that it'll most maximize those grates that are already there.
So there is stormwater there. One of the drains is probably not, the drain, there's nothing wrong with the drain, other than it's not functioning the way it was intended, because it was, it was actually lower. This project probably will not fix that, but we, I believe that the, the irrigation project that we're working on is going to try to attempt to fix that. James, I said it right? Or Greg? Thanks, James.
That's what Brandon said, he said, one of the two things that should I love, create back out to get water.
Yeah. So if you notice, somebody mentioned a puddle. That puddle that's the biggest issue is out in the middle of the grass already. It's, this project's not going to touch that. The plan is, we have had some discussions about how to fix that, but that would actually be part of that irrigation project.
But, but number one wouldn't add to the puddle that's on the park, because it's already got.
I don't see it, no.
Greg, if we went with number three, does the increased green space create any more opportunities for using this field in different ways?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, we could expand a lot of the events that are happening down there right now, where they were limited on space-wise. You know, you could look at some sort of athletic field being temporarily painted there, even if it was on, you know, we have people popping up doing volleyball. We could look at doing stuff like a pop-up soccer and things like that. That, that becomes then big enough. We could do a full-size bill. We're not having half a full pump out there, but we could do some small-sided soccer. We could do something fun to tie it in. I mean, it definitely becomes, if you do all grass, it's a much more usable, usable recreation space. And we can expand a lot of the operations that we're already moving parts, events.
So just to add, like, option five here.
Just what we needed was more.
It could be reforested. And you could have, yeah, you could, and not do any grass, basically. So you can have a pathway for vehicles to drive through their own straw, and then you could plant, you could expand the look of the park, the playground, trees where the parking lot is, and not do any grass, which would probably be the least maintenance of anything and the cheapest. But it takes away the park, I mean, the.
So, yeah, so your option five, how do you see people getting in for farmer's market?
Same way.
Just coming in the same, coming in the same way and coming through the trees to get, to just pull onto the grass?
Yeah.
And so then, it's not like really forested, it's more like this, the wood chips with some plants? Is that what?
Well, just trees. You know, wherever the parking lot ends now.
Go back to option one, please, BJ.
So the.
Talking about planting something sort of where bushes are and.
To where the front of that Tacoma is.
Yeah.
Trees on both sides.
Just, just forest-looking, though, not, not.
The parking lot was huge.
Yeah. 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 But it, it wouldn't be formal plantings like in a row. It would just be randomized, forest-looking. So it gives us shady area. And then, then you wouldn't have to expand irrigation. You would keep a pervious surface.
Right.
And there's no grass to move.
A lot of times, there are, in, in older places, there are two paved or bricked runners that you would come in on. But that's probably going to be a problem. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about, the biggest vehicle I've seen use that space was at a downtown movie. And it was a giant treats truck, if you will. Yeah. And I don't know, I've never seen, I've never witnessed anything larger than a big town pickup. I don't know whether anybody.
Like a box truck.
Right.
On occasion, it's a food truck.
Right.
An ambulance, a box truck that brought some tents or some of the screens in. But those are rare. Most of the time, it's a pickup truck or a lawnmower.
So the two-runner idea is actually probably, shoot that one down for me with just ground between two runs for something to go in with a green area with, with random trees. I, I see people pulling off, I see everybody pulling off to the left to do the farmer's market once a week. Pulling off a runner and maybe some upkeep on that. But I also see, as I go, as I, as I travel in downtown Pinehurst, I am, I am drawn to the sidewalks that are bricked. And it has the feel of a village, which I think we also would like to have. And I think that that's indicative of the way that we've redone some of the sidewalk areas coming up the hill. So I'm wondering about double brick runners. But I, but I also don't have the background to understand the maintenance that I'm asking for. But that would be option six, I guess, just to really confuse things.
That's what I was saying.
I didn't, I didn't want Brandon to top it out with five.
And you can address it. And then I've got another question, too. Do you want to address the potential, or just keep these as floating ideas?
Yeah, I don't have anything, we haven't thought about that. I don't know that there's an issue whether we use brick or we use some type of paver to put runners in. The only thing that I even thought of during that short time you were talking was just the fact, if there's a vehicle coming out and a vehicle coming in, they're definitely going to have to take turns. Right now, you can kind of get two normal-sized vehicles by each other if necessary.
How often do you see a traffic jam on that area? I don't, I mean, farmer's market.
Farmer's market.
People are going the same direction in, and they're coming out at the same time.
Yeah.
I think it might work. And I do know that some people have, yes, there's one, there's, there's one company that serves people at the farmer's market that has an old ambulance that they use. There's a school bus that's used. I get it. And I love it, and I don't want to do anything to deter that. But I'm wondering if within, with, in keeping with the, the culture of downtown, the historic nature of it, does that maybe make the most sense to do two brick runners? Which seems like it would be a fairly, if it was a mistake, I would happily stand on the street corner and say, that wasn't my idea, and that was a mistake. But if it was a mistake, it seems like it would be kind of easily undone. But I, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to be consistent with the fact that we are and have been, since my children were babies, we have been a sweet village downtown. And I think that speaks to sweet village a whole lot more than a slab of black asphalt. I, I just, you know, I, I just think that's consistent with, with what we've done.
Obviously explore that and look at that.
Is part of the thought process?
Talk to me, yeah.
Is part of the thought process that you got these two beautiful brick streams that the tires go on, but the, the center of that's still going to be maintained in such a manner that it's grass?
Yes.
I think my.
It's permeable.
Only concern with that might be because the traffic by its very nature, it's fine if it's a grounds truck that is going to the end and then exiting off where Mike showed, but relative to like the farmer's market and stuff, you're still going to be turning off of that and on to a lot.
And that was what I was asking.
That center is going to be able to be maintained when the natural traffic pattern isn't necessarily just up and down the two strips, but constantly turning across.
Right. And my question was.
It might end up being some of the same concerns.
Right. My, my question was, what about the edge of the left-hand track going in? I mean, do you, do you wear that in a fashion that, that makes it, and again?
The left-hand track going in, and if you're going in, the, moving from the right-hand track across in making that turn.
Yeah, I just, I, and I understand.
I like the visual before it's used. I'm just trying to take it there.
Thank you. No, I, I'm with you on it, and I also readily admit that that is not my expertise. I'm, I don't have a construction background. But I also think there's a beauty to honoring the culture and the history, and that is the historical district. It's right on, and we've done such a nice job of, of maintaining that sense of, of, of culture and history. And, and that just appeals to me. And I'm sorry to throw an option number six at you, but I do, I do think it's worth considering that idea. And I may be completely off-base, but that seems consistent with what we want our sweet village to continue to look like. That is the reason that people catch the train and come down here and shop downtown and support our businesses. And, and, and I would rather have a picnic in the park next to two brick runners than a slab of asphalt with 12 spaces.
What about inside trees?
I love the trees. I, I, I appreciate that you're becoming a tree advocate. This is wonderful.
Becoming.
Okay, I appreciate that you've always been and will continue to be an incredible tree advocate.
I think, I think aesthetically, it would be pleasing, too.
I do, too. I think it'd be, I think it fits the town. So, sorry about that. And that's not me just trying to throw a total wrench in everything. It's just trying to think what's going to be consistent with what we're trying to do downtown.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there?
Option seven.
Is there enough room between, behind the restrooms? I know there's a water fountain there. That actually might be, might be no. But there's a lot of families who would like the fencing to go all the way around the park, so that they don't lose their children behind the restrooms. Could we make a one-way road from New York to Ash, where people can park along one side of it? Or farmer's market? Or maybe it's permeable surface, but then it's thinner, and they can drive up and then through the other side?
This really is option seven.
It is option seven, I know. We're just going to keep throwing our options out.
I don't think there's enough room between that and the tennis courts. It's pretty tight.
Yeah, there's a.
Then it goes up.
Back to your main issue about safety, too. Yeah.
We're found already in the play, in place.
When it's working.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And you do go over the sidewalk on, on New York Avenue.
Yeah.
There is seemingly some consensus for some of these.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to, I challenge you to name the consensus. Scratch two, and we're going to scratch four.
Yeah.
Driveway and the pavers.
We're going to add six.
Yeah, and six is the runners, and number five is, I have forests, that's not.
And I don't know the proper name for runners. I, I can't imagine that's the proper name, but you understand what I'm saying. Two, two tracks.
It's like, yeah.
And brick, I think, fits with.
The concern is, how do you know that cars even stay on the two brick?
You don't.
So then you, you tear up everything anyway, because they're driving on.
You hope not.
Yeah.
But it's possible. I understand the problem.
But in that scenario with the runners, that would be option four with the grass and runners, because you wouldn't need that option if it was Ponstrel.
Right, so.
Yeah, option three.
So maybe we check in with the mind who can tell me everything that's wrong with option six. BJ hit it.
Instead of runners at all, to keep it grass?
Oh, I think that would really wear out. I mean, that would look like, that would look like an old driveway. I think, and they may, too. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying this is definitive, but I'm saying it's consistent with what we're trying to maintain. We have a historic.
You're going to lose some grass with runners, either way.
Right, right.
People are not going to stay on the runners. That's just, that's just how it is. They're not going to drive on the runners, not because you're intentionally trying to do something wrong, because I'm dealing with my kids, it's hot.
Right.
Normal things you go through when you're coming in and out of there.
What are these brick things for?
And you're going to lose parking spaces, and I get that. I get that.
So.
And that doesn't bother me as much as.
I don't think that grass is going to be pristine in between those runners whenever you do all the time. I think you're going to have some spots of dirt.
Right.
A clump of grass that we will maintain and we will mow, but you're going to have a struggle keeping that
Yeah.
Looking like you would like it to look year-round.
As I walked downtown this morning and walked past the lot at the Baptist church that has the pull-in that is often used as an overflow lot, that's been kept in pretty good shape. That, that becomes a meeting place and a workout place and a car park and a lot of things. And for whatever reason, that's holding up pretty well. And maybe it gets less used than this would, but I don't know. And I don't know what the expense would be. To me, it's worth taking a risk. And, and the consistency with the historical nature of downtown is really important to me. So, and I'm readily willing to be talked out of my idea.
That's all right. So, I mean, it sounds like we're, what we're really voting on is if we want 12 extra spots to add to that park. Like, that's what it kind of comes down to.
I think I was the only one that was on it. I mean, we spent a year or two fighting hard for any spot downtown. We added a few, and it was just, it sort of always stuck in my head. So I'm like, the ability to do that, I'm like, ah, it's, it's pretty good. At the low cost, too, because it got expensive adding some of those spots. So that's, I mean, that's one big reason why I'm just option one. Also, it looks like we are adding some trees. Again, the perimeter fence, the picture you showed me does have trees that are not there in, in option one as well.
Ornamental trees, I think.
Correct.
Parking on New York, right?
We did a slide sideways. It was, it was parallel.
There's, there's parallel.
That's what we added, yeah.
You remember how many more got added just on that run, approximately?
Offhand, well, are you just talking about the block of New York between Ash and? I don't remember right offhand, but I, I want to say typically when we moved from parallel to the angle, it, it added like three or four additional spots from what was there originally. Yeah, I think the 72 number you're thinking about was more the one-way project that we did on Broad. But I, I think when we went to the angle parking on New York, it one slowed traffic significantly, which was good around the park. And I think it added net three or four positions, off the top of my head.
You mean over here?
Yeah, just the block of New York between Ash and Broad Street.
I bet 72 was when we made the one-way change.
Yeah, that's what that was.
You pretty much count what was on the other side of the street and double it, right?
Yep. So I don't, I don't want to, to rush the decision in any way, but it does seem like a majority of the council is leaning towards one. And I know that it's hard to see additional parking spots when it's, when the alternates additional grass. But it's also, we're not losing, it's not like we're taking up grass.
To put it in. It's already existing.
It's already there, yeah. It's really just cleaning up the existing lot and turning some of the, the raised surfaces into just other parking.
I don't offer this to extend the conversation three or four more months.
Okay, add more options.
I do, I do really, I, I do appreciate, I think what I heard you say earlier is, the real question at this point is whether you're going to have 12 parking spots or not. Because in all honesty, the difference between option three, all grass, and sort of the thing that Councilwoman Peterson's talking about with one and six function almost the same for the purpose of determining what we need to do to get the, the irrigation designed. Because if there's going to be parking out there, we can end the line of where we're trying to irrigate. Whether it's one or six, we're still going to want to irrigate fence to magnolia tree line. So if that. If that, if you want the parking, then I think we have the answer that we can work with. If you want to abandon the parking, I think we can at the very least start working toward the irrigation plan with the recognition that it's either going to be all grass or it's going to be all grass with two strips of brick or something down through there. But that's, I think your question or your comment relative to the parking is really kind of the key decision point at this stage.
Yeah. Is there any circumstance, maybe if the bathrooms were on fire, is there any circumstance that a fire truck would need to get into that area?
Yes, and there has been.
Tell me about that.
Well, obviously, we did have a bathroom farther there. We actually did pull a truck into that. It was not the truck we used. We recently had a large limb break off on one of the oldest tree in the park there recently.
Right.
And when I say large, I'm talking about
It's huge, yeah.
Putting a half in diameter. It wasn't a fire truck, but we had to get a boom truck in there. So when we do this, staff will take that into consideration. We're going to make sure that we can still, it's rare that we had to get a large truck in there, but I assure you that it does happen once or twice a year.
In that case, does the truck pull in, do its work, and then back out? Is that what happens?
Yes. Either it backs in or it pulls in and backs out.
I got you. Okay. All right.
And I'll say too, like, I definitely don't want to add any new, in that area, add any new pavement. Appreciate your comment as to the historical nature. But for this spot, I mean, as long as I can remember, back to being a child, it was a, this lot was there. So it's always been this
Well, back when you were
The old police station.
Back when you were a child, that was a police station.
Behind it.
It was behind the police station, and we opened up green when we knocked down the old police station and built the new. And that created a downtown park. And then consistent with what we have happily created, which is green space and updated the play area, I just feel like it would be a consistent look if we honored that sort of historic culture and that green space that we've adopted. So, yes, there was a horseshoe police station there. I think it was a 1950s building, but I bet you were born, and maybe that was in your mind.
Yeah.
Sadly, it's in mine.
It's where council used to meet.
All right. Again, I don't want to rush the decision, but when we went through the options, it felt like at least three people felt strongly about one option. Are you all ready to take action towards that? Or do you all want to allow staff to go through and start the irrigation process and then come back and revisit this?
So I kind of go back to what I said. I'm fine with either one
Okay.
Or three, or three V five, which is the trees. I think if we decide to go three
If we decide to go three, trees can, planting trees there instead of grass can always be done, can be decided later. So I'm fine with either way. But if, if, if keeping the parking there is the, I don't feel strongly about
Yeah.
The parking is a premium. I get that.
Yeah, I know.
And it's used.
There's so many people that ask for parking downtown. As much as I hate to lose the potential of green space, I also feel like out of respect to the people who keep asking for parking, this is something that maybe should not be taken away.
I also feel like anytime I go downtown to the farmer's market, there are plenty of spaces within one block area, and
At 11 o'clock
I don't have a problem with that.
When the business is open, it is a struggle.
Right.
Having a business that close.
Yeah.
I know it's, it is difficult. All right, counsel, I will follow your lead if someone wants to make a motion or if you want to continue it.
Again, what's the, from a budgetary, like, if we don't pass it now and it leaks in, are we going to add 25%? All that, those rules confuse me. Are we facing one of those things?
No, we, total budget, if you combine both, we've got $175,000 in the current budget right now. So if we do something that's going to cost more than that, then obviously we're going to come back and say, hey, we need to, a budget amendment. But right now, we have $175,000 to do whatever we do in the space and irrigation.
And you did say option one was the cheapest, if I'm remembering right.
That is, that's probably the second cheapest. The cheapest is probably the grass.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But we, but
Now, what the grass would do on the front end is you would probably exceed your original
Irrigation.
irrigation amount, but it would not take up the cost of asphalt, obviously.
Yeah. So the most expensive of the options that we have up here is four, which no one is leaning towards. And I don't know that $175,000 is going to cover number four, by the way. We knew that and reported that at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's really important for us to remember that sometimes cheap is expensive, and cheap is going to lock us down for this. This decision is a 40-year decision. So
But we're not really changing anything. It's already
And is that okay? Because we are now taking what was the back lot at the police station in what is now a green space, and we are not honoring the sense The park is.
Well, we're not taking up any more of the
Right. The park, the park was, my point is, the park was originally the police station.
I know, I'm just making sure that it's clear
So I wanted, so we're not honoring the fact that we're trying to be consistent with the historical nature of downtown and to change with what previous councils have done to change that area. But, you know, whatever.
It's a little deeper for me, though, than
It is deep.
I'm saying it's not, it's, I'm not that deep in that we're not, that I'm dishonoring something, I guess is my point. I think we either improve our existing use, which is option one, or we come up with some other option. But what we're not doing is taking up existing green space, existing park land, to put in a parking lot that doesn't currently exist. I don't feel strongly either way, whether we do three, or five, or one. I understand the argument of one, clearly. Parking is at a premium, but in no way am I dishonoring anything in either, in any decision.
So I would be interested in an estimate, if the council's willing, an estimate on what, an estimate and a proposed drawing on what, we'll call it 5.5, because I think it's a combination of what Brandon has suggested in regard to the trees and what I have suggested in regard to the historical runners through there. That would be what I would suggest.
Do you, staff, do you feel like you all could throw together some kind of image on what it would look like to throw some trees, maybe runners, or some sort of path? It's still going to
So the runners would only be in the grass. There wouldn't be necessary for runners in the trees, because it would be straw.
Yeah.
And
Runners in the what, sorry?
The runner, the brick runners would only be necessary in option three.
Well, and then do you end up with a parking lot like Ironwood where you're parking between the trees?
Right. Which would be fine, which would be great. It's a permeable surface and a green space.
You know, mine is just, the trees would be, of all of these options, will be the least expensive.
Yeah.
Right.
And So in that scenario, cheap or expensive, it's, in my mind, it'd be better.
I think the runners may make it, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
There's going to be some expense to that, and it's a better material than asphalt.
Are we talking about enough space for emergency vehicles to get through?
Right.
And we're talking about parking in addition to this as well? So is, are we not, so parking is excluded?
I think parking goes the way of the trees and the historical nature of it.
I think, I think as a council, and I appreciate what you're saying, Councilwoman Peterson, because you're right, Southern Pines is an old town, and its history is beautiful. It's complicated, but it's beautiful. But I think we're here to serve the people of Southern Pines, and if the people need parking spaces, I don't know if we need to really be concentrating so much on the look of something that's not adequately serving the people of the community. So that's, it's just a thought.
Greg, if, I guess, assuming we did the tree or the runners, would that remove it from being able to use it for extended field space or limit what y'all could do with the extra green?
I wouldn't remove it, because theoretically with trees, right, we're not talking about growing out into the existing green space, right?
Yeah.
It would be sort of in the footprint that's there now.
The existing parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
The trees would definitely make that more difficult to do, just strictly from an access standpoint. If you're thinking about getting into and out of the space for events, call it farmer's market, any of the festivals that are down there, they become hurdles to at least be aware of, right?
Yeah.
So for me, personally, the, I think of this as, are we going to gain more space for us to use recreationally? Again, I'm coming from the parks recreation side, strictly thinking in that world, right? So we gain grass, how can I program it? How can we access it? How can we expand it, like you said, that's already happening there? Or do we just update what's, we already know works, and we already know we have the space to do the things we're currently doing, but can we make it a little bit easier in that space? I think what worries me is, I like the idea of having a dedicated access point or whatever. I think that helps with some of the safety concerns that are there. So if it's a parking lot, you know, can we have the ability to put up a bollard during these heavy traffic events that we can shut the parking lot down? Because then you can still expand. I can put tents in a parking lot, it can be a vendor space. But if it's a one-way path, whether it be brick paver or just driving across the grass and then having it plucked off, I mean, for me, I think being able to control the flow of traffic through there during those big, heavy events from a
Sounds like one or two.
Yeah.
Your statement on bollards. I think regardless of what we do, bollards are pretty important, at least to have access to have them there for big events. I agree.
Opening up the space definitely makes it more programmable from
Correct. Right, understood.
It's still recreational space, even if it's trees.
Yeah, actually, it limits, it limits what we can do, right?
Well, it limits what you can do from a field perspective, but it's recreational space.
But not an Easter rig hunt.
Who?
It'd be a great Easter rig hunt, yeah.
Graphics creator is here, but, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion, but in the respect of maybe letting, letting whoever makes this, it's not me, I don't know how to do it, create maybe a look and say, hey, here's kind of what we're looking at. I'm okay if we wait until next, next work session or next business meeting. Whenever, when do you want a decision by?
Work session. I think work session, yeah.
Peterson, you said that you could, even if we narrow it down to two and a half options, you at least can, two and a half, I've narrowed it. Staff can move forward on
What I was saying was that whether you choose option one or something that resembles three or five or six, those are kind of the two very different things. Option one, there's kind of a line in the proverbial sand where we need to plan to irrigate, and then it just becomes parking lot. Under three, five, or six, we will plan to go fence mulch all the way to the
Would be the same, really. Three and six would be the same. And five would be
We need a footprint. We need a footprint we're going to be in. That's where we need to be at. If we have a footprint, we can work, we can work from that and bring you something back if you choose, if that's what you want to do.
Okay.
That's what, I would advocate for that.
Let's, let's continue it onto the next work session and see if we can get a couple more visuals together.
Absolutely. Let me clarify. My turn. So we want to do something from the street, the lint with grass, but some type of runners for vehicle tires. And then we want to do some semblance of trees on the left side.
That will come to be
Is that, is that your vision?
Yeah, where the, where the parking lot currently is, just reforest it and have access where you can get through the trees. Yeah.
So
And that is option 5.5.
In my vision, I don't know that you can necessarily get through the trees
Yeah.
But we go to the end and make a loop around to drive into the park.
That's what I was just going to ask. When you talk about access
I don't think, unless you tell me differently, we're not going to bring you something where you can drive through the trees.
Okay. So what
If by through, you mean you can get to the end of this where Mike talked about an access.
Or you immediately left, when you turn in.
So what I'm
As soon as you come across the sidewalk, you immediately turn left, or you go to the end. I'm talking about Farmer's Market.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, staff, we have to go to the end. We have to get to the end.
Right.
So in my mind, anybody that comes through there is going to have to drive to the end.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm not making, I don't think we should make two
But that means that the ability to maintain grass in between the pavers and the ability to maintain the grass at the end of the thing
It creates the same situation
are both going to be very difficult.
At the very end, that it would happen on the beginning.
Their option is it's green space and keep all the vehicles out of the park, including farmer's markets and everything else. I mean, that's
I don't know that that's realistic.
I think Farmer's Market is good, unless they line the
Bad, I'm just saying that is the one thing that hasn't been discussed.
Which does address the safety issue, if you have the vehicles out of the park. But they do, they're there early, they're stationary, they're not moving, and then by the time they are moving out, the crowd is definitely disipated.
Not to say that something couldn't happen this Saturday or today or tomorrow.
Right.
To my knowledge, we have not had a vehicle versus any pedestrian, child or otherwise issue.
It is a respectful
We've had some calls there, but it's not vehicle versus pedestrian.
Right.
That leads me to believe that most people who are driving or parking are being very conscious of what they're around.
Right. I agree with that.
All right. It does sound like a majority of the council has already decided, but for the benefit of everyone to be comfortable with our decision, why don't we continue it on and see if we can keep option one, three, and then some combination of five, six, five and a half, whatever we're going to call it, and just see what runners would look like, see what additional trees or, or, you know, shade, ornamental, whatever the purpose is.
Like a rendering of something, I still, I need to know what, paint a picture for me, please.
Just take all of our audio and throw it into AI and just see what comes out.
Like, what do I mean by trees?
What is it you want a rendering of at this point? Because I need to, I need to be thinking right now about, what I am thinking about right now is, how much time is it going to take to generate up another rendering between now and the next work session?
Right.
Because some of the things I've heard you say, I'm like, I'm trying to figure out how I would do that, and, and it's, some of the things are easier than other options. Some of these things you just
Number three with two brick tire tracks, for lack of a better term.
Runners all the way down the end.
Okay, that's easy.
And then number three And then number three.
And that's number three with just trees.
Some trees.
Within the general vicinity of where there's asphalt now as opposed to taking up existing.
I'm going to ask another question that is not at all intended to be smart aleck, but I really want to know, how mature do you want the trees to be shown? Because, hold on, hold on. I asked that because we're now preparing a rendering and if I come in with something that shows the way they're going to look a year after being planted, they're going to be two-to-three-inch caliber trees kind of dotting around in this grass, whereas if I ask if we're planting long leaves and if you're wanting to know what they're going to look like when they're mature, I just copy and paste some of the older trees into this area and that's what it looks like. But those are two very different scenarios depending upon one year or 30 years.
And relative to budget, it changes very significantly also.
Yeah, the character of it does.
At least in my mind.
Please don't think I'm asking that.
No, no, and I understand that. And I think that, I think that one of the things that's most important is shade, and I don't think that a long-leaf pine serves that purpose anytime soon. So I would look at trees that were as mature as we could afford to have them be, and I would look at trees that would provide shade. So I would look at trees that weren't larger than those trees.
So right here are good examples of just fairly simple things to render in because these are PNGs, you just drop them in here. And these are all new, and I can just populate this whole area with those and.
Are those oak trees?
Yeah, they're a variety of deciduous trees.
And I don't think, you know, as I drive down in front of, as I drive down the new road, and I appreciate the fact that everybody's worked really hard to get long-leaf pines there, that's not going to provide in 30 years the canopy that I wish was on that road. That's going to provide tall.
Which road are you talking about?
The road that runs in front of.
Carolina Green Park.
Yeah, thank you. It's lovely.
In the interest of staff's time and the citizens' money, Brandon, Bill, Deborah, assuming a rendering comes back, is there a chance that you're not going to, that you would vote something besides one if this rendering comes back and looks great? Like, is it going to change your opinion? Because if it's not, then we need to just go ahead and vote.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine voting, I said before.
And follow-up to that, BJ, how long, I mean, your time's at a premium. How long would that take you? Are we tasking with hours or 15 minutes? I have no idea.
That's a half a day.
Oh, to make that, to create that?
Yeah, I have to, I mean, it's, these aren't easy to create, like, to make them look good, to make it so that the truck is the right scale.
I think our, thank you. I mean, it looks like a giant parking lot.
Make it the right scale.
On that opportunity, I actually don't need to see the rendering on the trees, really, at all, I don't. If someone else needs to see it, that's fine, but I know what, I can visualize it.
The initial goal of this conversation was, the parking lot's falling apart, we need to do something about it.
Right. And not.
It's turned into a six-month conversation about what we're going to do with it. And although we have six and a half great options, if they're, if three people are already leaning in one direction, that's enough to make a decision. And I don't want to spend precious staff time working through what's going to end up just being another conversation.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Don't get me wrong, it's doable, I just, you know.
Yeah, I know it's.
And I enjoy doing it, it's kind of one of those side things, I'll do it night, some night, but it's like, it's very enjoyable, but yeah, it does, it does take a minute to put it together.
And I love the idea of reforestation, I love the idea of runners, I love the idea of all the grass, the grass getting torn up in those, any grass scenario is an issue. And then it turns into having the same conversation next year that we need to fix a problem that we were trying to fix last year, but now we have grasses torn up and mud.
And then nothing ever happens.
Yeah, and nothing is happening. And so I'm just, I am, I guess encouraging us to make a decision if it's, if we're just going to put more time into it, to make the same decision.
I think it's interesting that we would not have open minds enough to look at the rendering.
I love the grass. Grass is my first choice, but it sounds like there's three people who want to add the spots. And I know that, I know you are passionate about it, it looking like something else, and I think that's a great idea. I also, I just see that our, our job is to make decisions, and the more we postpone those decisions and continue it off, we're just not doing our job. Like, we're wasting town resources being indecisive. Do you all want to see a rendering or do you want to vote? And if we see a rendering, is it potentially changing anyone's mind?
I mean, it'd be interesting to see. I don't, I don't think in light of the reasons it would for me. I mean, just because of what's motivating me for the one. So, I mean, I'll make a motion, and if it doesn't pass, or it does, but in light of parking needs and demands, in light of low, low maintenance access for maintenance vehicles and for easy in-grass, e-grass, for farmer's market and other events, and in light of replacing what's currently there and not paving over current green space, I will make a motion that we go with option one. Assuming Mike assures me that the landscaping is going to be similar to the picture.
I just wanted to say.
It will be.
I know you already made the motion, but I just wanted to say, I'm definitely open-minded to anything that's brought before the council. I mean, no one has all of the answers, and if we have closed minds, we don't need to be here. So I'm always open. But I do feel kind of strongly about the parking spaces because I've also talked with people who wanted to park downtown. I think it was last Halloween, people were parking all over the place because there were no spaces. And they, you know, even where the laundromat was, I mean, just, you know, scrambling for a space. And so, you know, 12 spaces is not all the spaces in the world, but I think it can really help in the downtown area. And I think it's still part of southern pines-y feel. Lots of families, lots of people, and having fun. So, yeah. And I do second your motion, Bill.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So option one is repairing the current parking lot, and any of the spots that are currently paved but not parking will then be transferred into additional parking spots.
We will put a sign up too that says tiny Tacoma is not allowed.
Thank you. Thank you. It makes the parking lot look too big. If you'd put a giant Tacoma, then it at least would have looked like a tiny parking lot.
Regular-sized Tacoma.
You can kind of tailgate in this situation though, which is cool.
Maybe. All right. All right. Do we have other capital projects? No, I forgot.
Of course, same conversation, Broad Street.
Yes, okay.
And this one, we went back and a number of us reviewed our memories from the work session and then looked, or at the retreat, really, more so than work session, looked at the minutes. And again, council was sort of of the opinion of bring it back and kind of get final approval. Mike, you want to jump in on this? The one thing we, I think the one place we did land is we did not want to go grass for a lot of maintenance reasons, which I think was like option one. So where we were really at is, again, money was budgeted to go with option two, and there was some discussion of doing some hybrid version of option two and option three, with the key to the hybrid being that what lies between the sidewalk and the curb would be brick. And then it's just a question of whether you do brick or mulch or potentially grass on the far side of the sidewalk, similar to what option three shows there. Again, to update or to remind the council, Planner Greve had reached out to the owner of the Harbor Facility. He is aware that the town's plan is to recapture its right-of-way where he's currently got some parking lot there. He and his partners, however, declined participating financially in any project out front to improve the curb appeal in that block. So it's really just a matter for us now of determining what design direction the council would like to go with it, and then our staff will go about planning and scheduling appropriately.
So we have grass, all brick, all grass, all brick combo.
Yep. And that combo, the picture you have is of brick and grass, but it could be brick and some other material if you did not want all brick.
One thing from the staff's opinion, when I'm talking about staff, I'm talking about the guys that are doing the work. This strip everywhere in town is a challenge.
The one that's closest to the road?
Yes.
That's why I said.
If this grass is an absolute challenge to maintain for a multitude of reasons, mainly when we're trying to mow or weed it, there are vehicles there. It has caused some issues in the past.
But the grass under the trees is manageable?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I thought three.
Other than, I feel like that grass will never do well.
It won't.
It won't.
Yeah. Well, it's not doing well as it is.
That's only how trees bother.
And you may recall when we had this conversation, Councilman Peterson had brought up concerns
about the use of the tree wells and some of the challenges that presents on Broad Street. But also remember those tree wells, as they're located in other blocks, are curbside where people are getting in and out, and it's within the sidewalk. With all of these trees being on the opposite side of the sidewalk, there's no reason for anybody to be walking over there necessarily.
Right, and I like the fact that we've put the parking changes to a parallel park there, rather than, I mean, I think that addresses the issue. And I also like the fact that there would be as mature a possible, as mature as possible tree and a wider well so that the trees have a chance of survival. So, yeah.
If we go with a grass option or just not putting pavers on both sides, we can always go back and add brick later, right? I mean, if the grass really doesn't survive.
That's correct. Obviously.
It's not going to.
Yeah, yeah. That is a challenge. We struggle with that all over town. You look up and down Broad Street right now, we have grass, we struggle. And that, some of that is just because of where it's at, the high traffic, people coming back and forth across it. Thank you.
What about like, there's like that little square that's sort of, you know, wild, it's not a pollinator garden, but it's just wild grasses, native grasses. Can you put that kind of thing in?
Yeah, that would be an option.
We actually did, we actually did that. So, yeah. You talking about.
It didn't look great at first, it's getting there.
It is.
It's a little out of establish.
It does. But, yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, for the last conversation, my personal opinion is that the more, I don't know, alive stuff that we can have in our town in general is better. So if there's a chance that we have something survive under those trees, I'd say it's worth a try. Unless it's going to look really bad.
What do you mean by that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wonder if you did that around the trees.
What she's suggesting, almost like a mulched bed where you put some plants in there, some grasses, kind of a Morganton Road approach.
So not the whole length, though. I thought she was talking about the whole length. So you would.
Oh, I think.
No, just under the trees.
Just under the trees. Okay.
So brick. Yeah, option three.
Tree well type of thing, just plant around.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I mean, yeah, throw in some, some natural grasses or.
Yeah, which will tie it back into around the corner with where they already planted that one little section.
And if it really struggles to look that good, then we'll talk about breaking it at some point in the future, but it would be nice to have something alive there.
If it doesn't do well, but I think it'll do fine. Those grasses are pretty.
Party.
Yeah.
So what would you be suggesting then between what I'll call the plantings around the trees and the next set of plantings in a tree?
I think it's just option two.
No, it's three. It's three.
So it's grass, so you're suggesting grass in between? That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
All the way down.
Anything that's green under those trees, I was thinking would be.
Oh, okay. I was thinking you were talking about.
Wild grasses or native plants.
Grasses around the trees and then brick between that.
Too much work.
Oh, so you, you, I thought you were before Brandon convinced me otherwise, Councilman Goodman. You're talking about plantings, you're talking about plantings of the, I'll call it wild grasses or the tall grasses, literally where it's shown as green grass there. Okay, that's what I thought you were saying originally, and yes.
That would be my choice.
I thought that's what she was saying originally.
You're looking for a longer swath, basically, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But instead of grass, would be native plants, grasses.
Are we still looking at the benches?
Longer grasses.
I think the benches were only an option two. I like the benches, too.
The benches would be over on the brick part of it?
Right.
The brick.
Bike rack and there's a bench.
Oh, I see, okay, so it is paved a little bit for the bench. Okay.
So we're saying brick, trees, and the wild grasses.
Opinion, so.
I'm just trying.
Okay. Yeah. Well, option four.
What I was going to suggest, if I might, Graham's team is the one who maintains all of our downtown plantings, and they have a good bit of experience. They're the ones who did that native grass planting. So if we could just kind of inform them of the general goal and then let them, Graham and I pilot a lot of things, some of my ideas are good, some of them aren't. So he knows, he has a pretty good idea now of what works well and doesn't. So I think he can come up with a good plan that we'd.
Yeah, and then it would be.
Be happy with and that they know they can successfully maintain.
Is, is that the comment you wanted to make when you stood up? There was a comment that you needed to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could just kind of defer to let him, you know, if we hear your overall goal for the longer swaths and let him figure out.
I also think the giant pottery pieces that are downtown are lovely, then could go between the trees, too. But Graham, Graham is an expert and a genius, and I appreciate everything he does, so, yeah. I would yield to him on that.
Is there one at the corner there? I don't think there is a planter.
Trying to recall it. No, I think it's a garbage can.
Also lovely.
There was some initial discussion of.
Tree there.
Yeah.
We had to take down. There was a large tree we had to take down. There was discussion about planters there, to be totally honest with you. We chose not to do a planter because in the summer, spring and summertime, our watering route is a two-day route, and it's pretty, pretty tight now. So to be totally honest with you, it was a staffing issue why we didn't put a planter there.
Okay.
It's not to say there won't be a planter there at some point, but we could put a planter there.
That's why we've tried to do with some of these native grasses because they can tolerate more drought and less water.
It's going to be a cross from the town hall.
Yeah, and that's, I think that an original discussion was prior to the change in the one-way, the distance of the one-way and all of this. So I think the Appearance Commission had pretty much maxed the number of planters they had on hand. But that certainly, if we do the upgrades that are being talked about, it's going to make some sense to do something there.
How does the Appearance Commission feel about these options on, you know, one, two, and three?
How?
How does the Appearance Commission feel about the, the brick, grass combo options?
I don't, I'd have to check with Corian, see if this is one he had brought before them at any point.
I don't think.
We think is option two. So option three would probably be less than option.
Fit within that budget, yes. Maybe with enough for a planter, so.
Does the council feel okay taking option three back to the Appearance Commission and if budget allows a planter and staff can water it?
So I think option, what's budgeted is option two, which is the highest option. And so option three would be, would be.
Less than.
An option two. So I'm not worried about the cost component of it. I think that we can probably move forward with what the modification is and then see if they concur.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can work with them if you'd like. We regularly, you know, engage with them, and if you'd like to just direct us with option three and then work with them.
And you make a valid point about the relocation of the town hall. We will want to pull that corner in, obviously, and it only makes sense with the redirection and one-way traffic, the same thing happens here.
Maybe that trash can can be moved over onto the brick area and a planter could go on the corner. And I know we saw the issue of watering it. I will volunteer.
We'll look at it, yeah.
Okay, we'll take shifts. Okay. Yeah, see if, and it's Appearance Commission's budget, right?
No, this is. It's all town.
And that's all turned off on budget anyhow.
All right.
It all says town of Southern Pines.
Yeah, it's all our money.
It's close.
Do you all feel comfortable with the, of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's where the tree was. Good?
Definitely. The other end.
With that?
Yeah, that's good. I think it's good. Sorry.
That's okay. As long as we're, we're good, you all need.
I also think that option three, if it doesn't work, is easy to turn into option two at a later date. So I think that's a beauty to that. That's a sequential undertaking if we have to do it. Okay, that just made you like put your head in your hands. You okay, really? There's nothing that you.
I'm always going to do that. We're good.
Yeah. I think so. All right. Do you want to vote?
No.
Just confirmation.
I got a gift on my.
Okay. If you do not agree with it, speak up now.
It's where the tree is.
All right. Was there anything else under capital projects?
I had nothing else. Did you have anything else in mind?
Oh, there's the tree.
Yeah.
Pretty, it looks.
It was way further down.
Yep. Yep. I wonder if we might consider a bathroom break.
Doing the post Chantel.
All right, it is 4:30. Let's come back in 10 minutes, 4:40. All right. We're on a break.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry for yelling into the microphone. All right, coming back to our meeting, we have a quick update on the capital projects before we move on to our next item.
Thank you, Mayor Clement. Director Spees reminded me, just a final wrap-up on capital project discussions. You will have a resolution or ordinance on your consent agenda come your regular business meeting in September. She's working through a lot of the capital project funds with our new auditor, who intends to report out to you at the business meeting in October. But as part of that, you may recall, or a number of you may recall, a couple of years back, we started moving our paving funds into a capital project fund, and the reason we did that at that time was because the contractor was not going to be able to get to it by June 30th, and we were trying to move money over without having to budget and have the additional 25% and all of that good stuff. We are going to go ahead and get that fund closed and begin to do that budgeting back in our operational funds, so you'll see that on your agenda again come your business meeting. But I did just want to address it in this meeting in case there were any questions between now and then about some of the thought process behind that. But again, that will come out of the capital project fund, and we'll start putting that back into operational money moving forward.
Okay, great. All right, ATM Roth. Is there anything else?
On a capital projects.
Okay. Chief Cameron? All good? Okay. Moving on to the post-Chantel action. Chantel? Chantel? Can someone? Yep. Thank you for y'all's quick response. I know that this was an unusual event, and I don't think it's what any of us want to deal with as a crisis, but it was handled very well by staff, and I really appreciate the quick response.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
And also importantly added on to that, none of this was planned. Nobody expected what we were getting from that, so being able to respond, and I know this on your timeline, when how quickly you implemented the response time when none of this was expected.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
We really truly appreciate those comments, and it means a lot coming from you guys, and obviously, we've had numerous really positive comments from the public, and that obviously means a lot as well. So one of the things, this is something we typically do, is a critique or something we go back and evaluate events. Police and fire do this. I wouldn't say on a daily or a weekly basis, but it's done numerous times throughout the year. One of the things Jessica and I and Reagan, of course, had a discussion early on after this event happened, is we had a lot of people, town staff, pulling in the same direction, not just police and fire. There was a tremendous amount of people doing, going above and beyond, and I say that without any hesitation at all, in these events. So one of the things that we did, obviously, as we worked our way through that event, the next morning, we started having some operational meetings. Some of that was to help from a recovery standpoint, but within about a week and a half, two weeks, we had a, what we called a tune-up, that we brought key staff in from every department to come in and talk about the things that went well, talk about the things that were challenges to us, things that we could have done better, maybe should have done better. I'm very happy to say, there were not a lot of things that we felt like we failed at. There were some things that obviously, we want to go back and adjust some of the things we're doing, but as a whole, it went probably as good as it could be expected on such short notice. So the other thing, and I'm gonna let Jessica talk for a minute, because she had a tremendous amount of effort to put this packet together, put this report together, is one of those things, you've heard us talk in the last year or two years about culture. We're big on culture. We're big on people who work here or part of that culture, part of our organization, and this shows that, because we literally had people show up to work without being told to and without being called. And that's, that is a, that is a sure sign of our culture, and that's from the top down and the bottom up, if you know what I'm saying. So that's also a good pat on the back for council as well. I mean, that is something, you can't do those kind of things without support of council. So with that said, I'm gonna let Jessica talk for a minute.
Sure. So, thank you, Mike. So we put our post-action report in your packet. I know it was long, so you may not have had an opportunity to review all of it, but we're here to answer really any questions that you have today, so we can do that first and foremost, and then after we finish any questions, then we have a little bit, we have a really quick video that we want to share with you, but, thank you. As Mike said, the culture is big for us, and it's not just about highlighting those who showed up, but it is about accountability, and really, it's about learning. And this was a big learning opportunity for us. We've never done a swift water rescue in Southern Pines. Deputy Chief Horvath said he's been here 24 years, and we've never had one. And so we really wanted to step back. You know, there were horrible things that happened in Texas, just from, you know, all around, and as you learned tomorrow, you heard about communications things, and you heard about, you know, emergency response and things like that. And, you know, as the town evolves, we have new people that have never worked emergency events with us. We'll have people who have never worked winter storms with us, and we said, we really need to sit down and make sure that we're prepared as best as we can be. Let's learn some lessons from this first event. We learned some things, hopefully we'll never have a Chantel flood, but, you know, we learned some things about high water and where we might see that again in other events, and how we can just better make the team more resilient. So that's what a lot of this was about, and we wanted to share this with you, because it did get a lot of attention, because it was unique, and, you know, even among Moore County, you know, that storm sat on Southern Pines, and so, so we just kind of wanted to report back, and then just, but to let you know the bigger aspect of our culture, that we talk about these things every day and how we can always get better. And, I mean, I think one of the things that probably made us, you know, most proud was, you know, several of our, the people who are on the front line said, you know, this was honestly, I think, the best emergency event we've ever worked together, and it was because we felt like a team, you know, no matter what part of the town team we are, we felt like a team, and even though the fact that we had, we had a lot of people out, because it was a holiday weekend, and usually, July 4th is a safe time of year for the streets team to take off, because you're not gonna get snow and ice. So if we're running a little lean on the streets team, it's okay. Okay, well done that weekend, and so, yeah. So literally, when he says we had people volunteering, they weren't on call, and they just literally thought, oh, I bet the town probably needs me, and they didn't get a call, they literally just drove over here, and that's what we're gonna show you real quick in this video. So we're really just here to answer any questions, or if there's any feedback you want to give us, and, but, you know, you also have our written report.
I have a quick question, because I live in West Southern Pines, and I thought about, even getting here today, I had to drive over to Midland Road and then make a right turn, and then go all the way down to get down to downtown Southern Pines, and then turn down Pennsylvania and get here, but I was, the first thing that came in my mind, and, Mike, forgive me, I was even thinking about you, I said, well, I can just send Mike an email or something. How in the world are you getting to West Southern Pines, you know, in the case of an emergency? I said, oh my God, this is.
So those are the normal planning things we go through on a regular day. Remember, just, so this is a big deal, road closure for the citizens, so the fire, police, and other town staff deal with road closures throughout, all day, all day, every day. And so we have a process to manage that. Now, let me go and tell you, Pennsylvania being closed is a big deal to response. So one of the very first things we did, when we knew this road was gonna be closed, originally we were saying, hey, it's gonna be closed about 15 days. Yeah, we missed that, that did happen. And there's another story besides that. But one of the things, we actually adjusted our response districts within a day after this happened. So we still have to work around that intersection, but we've got two different routes that we take to get around that. They're planned, all of our driver operators and our officers know that, so we're working around, we're dealing with it just like, just like everybody else. We adjusted some of our districts. There's some things that are a little bit further away from here that we would normally get from this downtown station that the other station has started to pick up. So we've made some adjustments to, to kind of continue to reduce that response time. Obviously, the best thing is if the road is open, so.
And we've got a couple more weeks.
Officially, mid-September.
I do want to acknowledge that the last two meetings I started late because of the traffic, you know, had people having to be rerouted to come around Pennsylvania, and I realized I should have done the same thing today. Just acknowledge that I made that mistake, but it is, it's a big deal, and I think that we're all figuring out different paths around Southern Pines.
Getting the system the same way.
Yeah, it's, it's been good to see that the work is gonna be, it'll be fixed, to hopefully not be the issue again.
And just as a side note for DOT, DOT's been very responsive. We've had a really good working relationship with them on this project. They're actually doing some things while they're in there to make it better than it was, so we could have already been finished with the project, but we're working long-term, so it's better along the way.
What happened with Yadkin Road? Has it been?
It's fixed.
It's repaired?
It's been repaired and opened. Yes, it is.
Good. Do you all want to go through, do you have more questions or go through the rest of the presentation video?
I just wanted to, I know this was Jessica's, sure, but I think your little tagline, one team, zero blame, better every time, was yours, and I think that's perfect, that's how you get better. I think it's how you're productive, and I appreciate you doing this, and that tagline's perfect.
So let me add, not, absolutely. But let me tell you, you all have, you all have experience with this. When you bring 25 supervisors or department heads into a room and you want to talk about things, it's really easy to talk about things that went real right. Well, we want to focus and be critical in ourselves, and we do that, and that's why we use a no-blame tagline. It's, hey, if something didn't go well, tell it, say it, so we can, so we can correct it. It is her tagline, by the way.
Yeah, and we had a really good process for kind of getting all of that out on the table. We put all the big sticky notes up, and then we gave people small sticky notes, and they could anonymously write, and the red sticky notes were just what could have gone better, and they wrote it and posted it, and so they didn't have to, you know, speak up publicly if they didn't want to, some did, and so that got everything out on the table, and then we could all talk about it together. And we had a lot of people, I mean, like BJ, he wasn't even in town, but he was part of that, and so we heard a lot of new ideas from that tune-up, and that's something we're doing with other processes as well. We had another one a couple weeks ago for finance and purchase orders and things like that, so, but we really just wanted to share that that is an ongoing thing, and we thought you're probably a little more interested than Chantel than you are in purchase orders.
It's good. I mean, no matter how well it's handled, there's always room for improvement, and I think it's great that you're working towards it.
Always, and you'll hear some more things, you know, we put. You know, we put in the back of this is kind of our timeline and our goals that we're working towards. So you may see some of these things. Staff's actually making really good progress. Like, one of the first things that we gave them was some flood hazard maps. And we wanted to get that finished out ahead of hurricane season. And so what that's gonna do is, we can quickly, if we know there's a bad storm coming, we'll put that out there, and we'll say, hey, guys, May Street in front of the bicycle shop, flood-prone. Like, you probably want to avoid that, like, you know. And then we can inform the public, so they can automatically make detours that lets our communications staff get out ahead. So those are, you know, some of the things that we said we can do better, and we are. So you'll start to see some of this.
I want to clarify one thing that I said earlier. I used the word "it wasn't planned." I guess no storms really are planned. It wasn't forecasted.
Exactly.
What we received wasn't forecasted. And when I was reading this, from the very first call at 1:05 to the decision to implement the storm policy 25 minutes later, I think is, was well done. And we still weren't necessarily at a point, I think we'd had that, it does say we had that tornado warning before, but I think that is commendable to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can show this video. This is, just to give you a quick, before BJ starts this, this is a, you're gonna start to see more of these on our social media. This is a project that Courtney Heaton, our new communications specialist, has launched. And she's gonna be regularly highlighting different town employees. And I know this is something that the mayor has been involved in. You've come to some of our events when we've, you know, done Public Works Week and things like that. And as we've shared pictures and things like that from different events on social media, I mean, just the feedback from the community, you can tell that they love to meet and to see our employees. But then also, our employees love it, and they proudly share it, and their family members share it. And so we said, you know what, let's do a little more of this, because that's what a lot of our community members, they want to know, who are these people out on their streets and in their parks? So because DJ was such a pivotal, important part of our Chantel response, we wanted to make him one of our early videos. And so you're gonna learn a little more about what he did during Chantel, but also what he does on a day-to-day basis. And is this already published on our social media? No, but it'll be going out soon. Yes.
I'm doing it on Tuesdays. It's called Town Here at Tuesday, and it'll be a regular series that we publish.
This publication that you did with the timeline, it's two pages. I mean, I feel like that there's gotta be a way that we can put this in citizens' hands.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
And I don't know if we can stuff them in a water bill, but I think this is great information for citizens that want to know how did it all, how did it all work? Because it's so easy to go on about your lives and not realize everything that happened. And I would want them to know about it as well. And what everybody that is employed by this town did to keep people safe and going. So I don't know that the mailer is the good idea, but
Yeah, we can definitely.
But social media, sometimes this gets lost. So those two pages, I think, are pretty important.
Yeah, we can do that. And a lot of that is, you know, to make them see how quickly things change, and tune in when things are going on, you know, because we're gonna get you important information.
The timeline is like nothing, nothing, and then it's like bam, 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 you know?
No, it really was. And it was so localized, too. I mean, I was honestly at my home in Southern Pines, and my home was not really getting much impact. I was getting the tornado warning. I was getting some rain. And I started to see some social media, and I just kind of thought, wow, I wonder if Mike needs some help? And so I literally texted him. I said, "Do you need some communications help?" And he was like, "Yes!" And then he called me, and I was like, "Whoa!" And that was like, really when?
Yeah.
And it, I mean, the bubble burst then.
Previous, and I'll say previous, I've been in it for eight, 10 years, but the Fire Department Police Department have always done some type of communications. It is a true relief between Jessica and Courtney that now it was myself or one of our deputy or assistant chiefs doing that communications. I'm gonna tell you, we're busy. And so I had a one-minute phone conversation. I said, "Look, these are the things going on. Send something out about this, this, and this. Call me back when you're done." And so it was literally that tweet. Because Lily, if you were depending on those of us, it wouldn't have happened.
No, and that's, I mean, trying to get the word out to people is so important. And it's, you gotta use every avenue possible. So it's good, it's a good time, well, time phone call. All right, BJ, do you want to play the, oh wait, we need sound. I think we should.
Courtney, I think you should. The impacts of a couple of storms in Chantel, they made a sudden impact, and really just caused this huge flood. DJ was the first street department employee, and he worked by himself for a couple of hours, helping the Fire Department Police Department close streets, and really went above and beyond in some of the worst conditions you can be. Loaded a ton of barricades and cones and went out and worked into closed streets and keep people safe. He's just one of those that just went above and beyond, truly benefited the citizens of Southern Pines during extreme emergency. And we wish we had ten more, just like him that did that on a regular basis. Really appreciate what he did, and rest of the street department also came in and supported him.
It was a lot. Probably one of the worst storms. I came working in an emergency emergency room. Came in probably right after the storm got real bad. Got here in Southern Pines, and was working with Mike Cameron and some of the police officers and the firefighters, trying to block off some of the roads, let people know there was high water flooding in certain areas, and do as much as I could to help them out before some of the other guys came in. Just try to keep stuff blocked off so far as we can help people get in. Best was, I've been working with the town now five years. Normally, I mean, I work with the guys doing street stuff, taking runs, going asphalt, shoulder work, anything that we end up having to do. Later, I've been sweeping the roads, coming in early in the morning, trying to sweep as much as I can before my time was up, throughout the day, or before traffic gets to you. Try to clear some of the ice roll and debris and stuff that I can off the road, so nothing gets blocked real bad over the dead place. We're trying to make sure that I can get everything that's close to the drains, so it doesn't wash over the drain whenever the rain gets heavy or a storm comes through, sand, rock, anything that might block the flow of water and cause flooding in certain areas around that. Red spoon. I hadn't even done like red spoon before, that I'm aware of and more than ever. I think since they opened everybody's life to be there, it's a fun place to eat with friends, family. There's different food trucks, it's all just a good environment overall. It means doing what we can, what we have to, to help citizens as far as roads need to be saved. Even though the word wind, or me sweeping, anything that might be, stuff might get built up in front of people's driveways. Anything that we can do to make stuff easier around here for the citizen.
In the height of the storm, things, literally, trees are falling, cars are washed off the road. My phone rings, and I don't recognize the number. I answer, it's DJ. He said, "Hey, Chief Cameron." This is DJ. I'm at the PoliWorks facility. He said, "I'm by myself. What do you need me to do?" And I said, "Load a truck and trailer with barricades." The Fire Department had barricades. We were out, and we were busy. I said, "Load a truck, load a truck and trailer with barricades, and let me know when you've done that, and then I'll sign you some roads to block." He said, "It'll take a few minutes," because again, I'm by myself. I said, "Do the best you can, and I'll put you with some people." And I ended up teaming up with some fire guys. But ultimately, he did work by himself for a while, so.
It's incredible.
Yep.
It's awesome. It's good to hear the positive stories.
And that's kind of, if you don't have any more questions about the storm or a report, we kind of have one last wrap-up that's related. It's kind of a good segue. If you picked up, DJ is one who operates our street sweeper. You heard him say he comes in early in the morning, and he reports at 4:00 a.m. to run that street sweeper. And that's an important part of our stormwater management. And of course, from Chantel, there's just been a lot more heightened concern, questions, things like that, about stormwater management. And so we've gotten a lot of questions. I know you all have gotten a lot of questions. And so we really wanted to put some things together. We put together this one-page, front and back, document that James helped us write, called "Stormwater 101: What Every Property Owner Should Know." And it really walks through what the law says that we can do in North Carolina regarding stormwater enforcement. It talks about what the town does. And this is in terms of our permit review, our inspections that we do. It also talks about, there's different rules for the different watersheds in Southern Pines. McDeeds Creek and Mill Creek, they are high-quality waters. And so this is where you're gonna see the highest level of requirements in terms of what property owners and people who develop there must do in order to protect those areas. But then other areas, like the Aberdeen Creek watershed, Rockfish Creek, the rules are not quite as strict there. But the bottom line is that no matter where you build in Southern Pines, you must design for at least a 10-year storm minimum, and then it goes up from there. We're really fortunate in Southern Pines that we do actually have roles in our UDO and things like that, and some of the other communities in North Carolina don't. And so we not only have the state rules, but we also have our town rules. And so we're kind of using a double layer of rules here. And so that's kind of a higher level of protection. It's still what's allowed within state law, because that is something that, you know, we always have to be mindful of. But there's some other communities that don't have the same standards that we do. And then another thing that we wanted to focus on is, we get a lot of questions on what people can and cannot do on their own properties. And, you know, especially residents and things like that. And it can be a little tricky, because you can do certain things, but you also have to be careful that you don't considerably harm others who are either upstream or downstream from you. And so we wanted to offer some, you know, kind of safe options that you can do that tend to be more on the homeowner scale, like rain barrels and rain gardens, and simply planting more trees, directing your downspouts. We gave you some contact information if you're having, you know, concerns. You know, as you all know, we maintain a lot of the roads in Southern Pines, more of the neighborhood roads. And CDOT, they maintain the bigger roads, like Midland, Indiana, May Street, Connecticut. So if you're having a drainage concern on one of their roads, we put the phone number there, as well as a short link where you can put in an online help request if you're having a drainage concern. And then for those who live on private roads, which tend to be the gated neighborhoods, but not necessarily, it's those homeowners associations, property owner associations, or the individual property owners who would take care of drainage concerns. And so really, we just wanted to give you this guide. We want you to distribute it freely. It's on our website now. We've made copies. It's available in our public buildings. So we hope that this might help answer some of the, you know, heightened questions that we're getting, and at least explain what we do and what other people can do to help protect the women properties.
Do you have extra copies of this? Could you bring it to our, not here, but to our business meetings? Just, I know we've got the QJ legislative rules. It would be good to have this there. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was just more or less an opportunity to educate. We have, since these last couple of storms, as Jessica said, we've been hit with so many questions. And this is an opportunity to get something out there to kind of say, hey, educational opportunity, what you can and can't do. Doesn't answer everybody's questions, but in many cases, it gives you a reference who you may need to talk to, or where you may directly question.
This is good.
Yeah, I was definitely put together with that in mind. And I know we shared it with all of staff, and I know BJ and his team, they're planning to bring it to Planning Board and things like that, because you do tend to get a lot of those questions at those types of meetings, so we'll definitely bring it.
Questions and comments about stormwater have maybe permanently, but certainly temporarily replaced questions, comments, and concerns about traffic and density as leading comments from neighbors of development.
Sure.
So what sort of proof does one offer if, that they have designed for a 10-year storm?
Probably need to call our own engineer up.
It's the whole reason you brought me, Mike. The short answer to that is, the developer's engineer is primarily responsible for performing the calculations to basically prove that they've met the design intent of the 10-year storm.
Which then you look at as the engineer for the town?
Yeah, so we perform a review. I want to be clear, you know, we are not recreating their calculations. We're not verifying that every single number in them is correct. We're taking a high-level look, you know. Did they account for, you know, there's a basic chart of a 10-year storm for a certain size area? We'll have about this many inches of rainfall. Did they use that number? Yes, okay, so we can check that off. But we're not there to take the responsibility or the liability away from that engineer for doing what he is supposed to do, or he or she is.
He or she, thank you, yeah. Just saying. Thank you. That chart that has what they need to account for, where can I find that chart?
So NOAA, if on their website, I usually just do a Google search for NOAA, and they're called intensity, duration, frequency curves. It's got a website with an interactive map. You can actually zoom into your house, drop a point, and it'll give you the detailed charts for that location.
NOAA?
Yeah, so National Oceanic Atmospheric.
And then you said intensity?
Duration.
Duration.
Frequency, IDF curve. They also do PDF, which is precipitation, duration, frequency curves.
Have you ever had an instance where you have called an engineer overseeing a project and said you have not jumped through the hoops you needed to jump through?
You know, we have picked up on some irregularities and some calculations over the years, but I don't think I've ever had one where I said this was just completely wrong and needs to be rejected.
And if you see irregularities, what do you, in your current position, do?
That's part of the site plan process. So, you know, if we see something, we make a comment as part of the TRC review comments.
And that would have to do, that would not apply to residential properties?
Correct. We do not typically do stormwater review on just a single-family residential lot.
But is a single-family residential property also subject to the NOAA restriction requirement?
So we'll take, for example, if you're gonna buy a lot in downtown Southern Pines,
Right.
and it's just a single standalone lot, no, there's really not much you're looking at there. BJ's team may look at it from a watershed protection standpoint, but Lily, that's kind of the highest level you're gonna look at. Now, if it's a brand-new subdivision, yes, we're looking at it at that stage.
How about an extension of an existing subdivision?
Yeah, so if it goes to TRC site plan, we're looking at it.
And again, have you ever called anyone, in any instance, called them on a failure to comply with the NOAA restrictions?
No, like I said, I really don't think, I am going off memory, but I cannot recall a case where I've had to call an engineer or put a comment where we basically said, "Your calculations are just completely wrong. Redo them."
Just for clarification, James, would you consider NOAA restrictions in any way, or just the data that is necessary to provide those calculations?
That's a more accurate description.
I just wanted to make sure I understood where that is.
The NOAA charts are basically giving you the rainfall intensity or the depth, i.e. the amount of inches of rainfall for that storm event.
The best management practices come down from DEQ, right?
Generally speaking.
And DEQ?
Department of Environmental Quality.
And DEQ, this gets into a confusion with us. And DEQ, this gets into a confusion with us locally because we oversee that, I think, as I understand, but we are outside of something going directly to the Fayetteville Office of DEQ. Is that correct?
So for erosion control, so there's two different arms of stormwater. There's what you do during construction, which we generally refer to as erosion control, and then there's what happens after construction. That's post-construction or, you know, permanent stormwater control. The town is delegated for the erosion control program, so we basically serve as an arm of the state. We do that review and that permitting process.
And that's something we've chosen to do.
Correct. The town chose to start that, I think, in the mid-'90s, and we've continued ever since.
So it required special legislation, right? Or?
The legislation exists that allows any entity in the state to do it.
And the reason we choose to do it ourselves?
I could not speak to why we originally chose to do it. I mean, that predates even Reagan.
A lot of the, I know there was discussion at one time around, A, just having some local oversight, B, for those who are looking for stormwater permits. It was easier to stop in with the town than to run down the state, but of course, that's been 30 or 40 years ago, so state processes have changed drastically in all kinds of different permitting areas. But I don't, again, that predated me, and I don't know exactly what the thought process was at the time that the town took that on.
Simply having it done by the town, you will get a higher level of service than relying on the state inspectors.
And yet the town, anytime we take a stand, for example, with the earlier complaints regarding the silt that was emptying into the pond and longleaf prior to the fact that it did overflow and flood houses, the town, if you assess something, you also, based on your assessment, go to the Fayetteville Office. Is that correct? And you ask them to also look at what you've decided?
So if there is a, I'll say, a disagreement or somebody doesn't like the answer the town gives, a lot of times, we will refer to the state and say, okay, this is what we thought is the correct answer, because we're still an arm of the state essentially in that case. Do you agree?
Right.
So we're not really kicking the can to them, but we're reaffirming what we thought was the right choice.
You were looking, you were looking to them metaphorically speaking as sort of a court of appeals regarding your decision-ish?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
But that's the erosion control side of it. The post-construction, the permanent stormwater, you know, the town has some ordinances. It's fairly loose. It essentially states you have to meet the pre-post requirement. The pre-post is based on the rate of water leaving your site before, having to basically be equal or less than once you're done with construction on a 10-year design storm. Now, the manner in which you do that, our ordinance does not tell you, any individual, how they have to do that, whether it's detention ponds, underground storage, infiltration basins, there's a number of different ways. What we will typically do is say, please follow the best management practice manual from DEQ, which is what Brandon was getting used to or alluding to.
And once we take something to DEQ, we take, we do take it to the Fayetteville Office, right? If you want a second opinion or a?
Yeah, we generally, we generally work with the Fayetteville Regional Office. We fall within their sphere.
And if someone has a concern after there is validation from the DEQ in Fayetteville, is there any remedy for that person to a higher authority if they didn't agree with the Fayetteville reading?
So if there is, I'll say, a dispute about a permit violation, it's a, a developer has a permit from the town, the town says you're in violation for XYZ issues, and the developer says, I disagree, I shouldn't be in violation. They have the option to appeal that violation first to the Board of Adjustment, our Board of Adjustment.
Our Board of Adjustment.
If the Board of Adjustment holds up the decision, then, and this is through general statute, they still have the right to appeal to, I believe it's the, it's gone by a different name, I think it's the Erosion Committee now, but I'm sorry, it's the State Sedimentation Committee, I believe is what it's called now. Essentially, it's the state-level board that kind of oversees the regulation of erosion control.
Now, have any of the cases in Moore County gone before the Board of Adjustment in the past?
Not now that I'm aware of. But again, that's appealing a decision on an actual permit. If there was no permit in place, I would have to defer to Mac what that individual's recourse could be at that point, because I think, I'm going to guess it's probably really a civil action at that point.
And that would be a civil action, not against the town, but a civil action against the people who were up the hill from you? Is that right? Right. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you for this information. I do really, I appreciate all of it. I think that Per Tempeit had a good idea, which is to have it accessible at meetings for the public because it is one of our most commonly asked questions now is water.
I do want to point out, our engineering technician team, they actually did the bulk of the legwork, getting the, you know, the real meat of the document. You know, I just worked on this a little bit with a lot of help from Jessica to clean it up.
Reconsider.
A lot of help from Jessica.
Thank you.
I mean, that is important. So is that everything? Okay, so then we move on to the next water discussion. All right. Different water. There's either too much water or too little water. All right.
Now, we're talking about potable drinking water instead of stormwater. So purpose this afternoon, there's been some discussion amongst the council about a general water overview and discussion, and of course, we'll then segue into the exploration of options with Moore County. So we'll walk through this presentation a little bit. It's going to be a lot of numbers, but I think it's the general base understanding that is necessary as we get into deeper discussion about Southern Pines and what our current scenario is, what our opportunities may be, and sort of how we have at least set ourselves up for both current and future considerations relative to growth. You want to go to the next slide, BJ?
All right, so as, and again, these graphics are by way of Jessica and Courtney, and they've done a very nice job with them, so hopefully they help to bring some understanding to what is a whole bunch of numbers. But relative to what we're going to be talking about, there's three math equations involved, and I know how much that is appreciated or not, based upon budget discussions and other things we do throughout the year. However, our scenario in part is played out by Drowning Creek itself, which is our water, our raw water source, and the amount of water that we can ultimately withdraw from Drowning Creek and treat for use by our citizens and customers. So again, there is a gauge down, a USGS gauge down on Drowning Creek, and the inflow at the intake determines what our maximum withdrawal is at any given time, and you'll see on the next slide what I mean by that. A second factor that we'll talk a little bit about is the plant output and capacity itself. So if we've got the raw water there and it's sitting in the raw water reservoir, and we bring it into our plant, and we treat it, and we wheel it out to our customers, how much of that are we allowed to do, both currently and potentially in the future? And then finally, there's just a discussion around storage and our current service commitments, and we'll talk a little bit about the delta between how much water is currently being sold or utilized versus how much water we potentially have access to for that purpose. So the first one of the math is the flow of Drowning Creek, and it's the bottom of this slide that's really key to kind of understanding what our capacity or abilities are. So if Drowning Creek is flying, flying, yes, flowing at greater than 39 cubic feet per second, we are allowed to withdraw 8 million gallons a day from Drowning Creek. That is a figure that is obtainable and has been obtainable for a very long time in all but drought conditions, and we have experienced drought conditions here in Southern Pines.
Well, will this be available or is this available online?
It can be made available following the presentation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So again, under our current permit, we are allowed to withdraw 8 million gallons per day as long as the creek is flowing at 39 CFS. At times at which it is flowing above 70, we are allowed to take that 8 million gallons up to 9.1, and above 77.6, which is actually pretty standard in all but drought conditions, we could withdraw up to 14 million gallons a day under our current permit on that intake. So again, that's sort of the raw water resource part of the equation. If you could go to the next slide, BJ. This particular slide shows a history of sort of what our withdrawals have been over the last 11 years, 2013 through 2024. There on the left, you'll see that our three lowest years were '13, '14, and '15 for a single day, and then, and of course, that's considered your peak, is your single-day highest for any given year. And then your three highest years were 2016, 2021, and then our most recent year, 2024. I would have to go back and look, and I, but that 2016 figure, and as high as it is, if I recall correctly, we had a pretty significant water break that drove that figure.
Yeah, I believe we were also refilling the reservoir at that time. You know, it kind of fluctuates up and down. It was an opportunity where you had a massive water usage, so the levels got drawn down, and then we were refilling the reservoir quickly.
Okay.
'13, '14, and '15, how do they compare? Wasn't there a shortage in 2008?
Okay, so the shortage, it was 2007 and 2002, I believe, two. The first one occurred before I arrived, the second one was while I was here in 2007. And when you talk about shortage, that was drought conditions and the flow in Drowning Creek, so we would have been limited at that time by the amount.
And before the second reservoir?
Yes, absolutely before the second reservoir. And one of the key aspects of this, and we're going to see it on the, we'll see it on the finished water side also, but one thing to understand is that the growth in the amount of water taken from the creek and then treated and utilized does not, is not directly correlated to the growth in the number of customers that we have. And that may seem counterintuitive, and we'll get to some reasons as to why that is, but what I'm getting at is if you double the number of customers, our history has not shown that you're necessarily doubling the amount of water used, and there's multiple reasons for that, and we'll talk a little bit about it. But what you'll see on this graph is the annual average, so what is used on an average day throughout the course of a year, has not grown significantly. It was at a low in 2000, over this period of time, it was at a low of 3.15 in 2013. And working off of memory, I can tell you, it was above 3.15 at times prior to 2013, but we'll talk a little bit about why that was.
So you're, sorry, I'm going to be an English teacher for a moment. So your thesis statement regarding this section was that there is not necessarily a correlation?
A direct correlation.
A direct correlation between additional use versus?
Additional customers versus use of water.
Customers, yeah, got it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, that was just?
Population has grown, or average, annual average million gallons a day is, just floats along.
Is just, yeah, it fluctuates a little bit, and we'll talk about that, but it's only grown from 3.15 to 4 over that 11-year period.
So I want to ask this question on this chart. So really simple mind here. Our 12-year average for intake, for taking water out of Drowning Creek, our 12-year average is 3.5 million gallons per day. We're permitted to take up to 8 million as long as we have more than 39 CFS.
Correct, and up to 14 million during normal flow periods.
79, was it 79 CFS?
It was on that last slide, but that sounds, 77.6.
And I may be asking this question, this may be coming up, is there a chart that shows what our average CFS is?
That is going to be off of the gauge. Go ahead, James.
Okay.
Yeah, there is. If you can go to the next one, BJ. So again, withdrawals versus customer accounts, and I just talked about this a little bit. We've grown by almost 3,000 customer accounts during that period of time, but as you can see, our average, our average withdrawals have actually only increased maybe a half million gallons over the same period. So at 3,000 customers, just eyeballing it, that's a little more than 33% growth relative to number of customers, half million gallons not being 33% of the withdrawals, and that's all I meant by the direct correlation comment.
There's not.
That there's not one, yes. Go ahead, BJ.
And during that same time, that runs from 2013 until present?
13 to 24, yeah.
During that same time, what has happened to the price of water for people in town?
The easy answer is it has gone up. I don't have that exact number right here in front of me, no.
Okay. How would we go about getting the price, I guess, per gallon?
That would just be a matter of going back and pulling from the budget or the rate sheets what has occurred in '13 through '24.
And the reason that the rates have gone up rather significantly, I think, would be why?
So that's a combination of a number of things. One, the cost of treating the water. Well, I guess you could really begin with the cost of pulling the water from the creek, which do energy power bills over that period of time, is a significant part of our operational cost. It's going to be the cost of treating the water. It's going to be the cost of maintaining the distribution system, which is to include both employee costs on kind of the day-to-day maintenance side of things, but also the cost of rehab, maintenance, and rehabilitation of the pipes that exist. And then you've got the capital improvement costs involved with extensions of system, replacement of systems, the replacement of major treatment parts in the water plant itself, a lot of the capital project costs we've been having for a number of budget years around both SDF and then also its impact on rates.
Debt service on the newer reservoir?
We, it was debt service on the newer reservoir for a period of this. The reservoir is now paid off.
Okay.
So.
And the, and we supply water to Pine Bluff, Whispering Pine?
I won't get to that slide, yes.
Okay, you'll get to that slide, and, go ahead.
And also, to add, because I have fallen victim to this, and I know others have too, not to conflate, the water bill is your, the bill that you get is your water bill when it includes your trash.
Your water, your sewer, your trash, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So percentage changes for the average withdrawals year to year, and here you see where it's significantly up and down in any given year. Again, probably, given our rate of growth, which all feeling of traffic and everything else aside, Southern Pines for many, 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 many a decade has maintained anywhere from a 1.2 to 2% average growth rate, which is not extreme in the realm of community growth across the state of North Carolina or the country. The impact that you will see have a major deal outside of just sales to our bulk water customers is whether or not it was a hot or wet year, because in years where it's dry, it's hot, and there's a lot of irrigation, we will sell a lot more water. So that really does have an impact on how much water we're billing for in any given year, is just the amount of irrigation that tends to take place during the summer months.
So if there, if it is a dry season and we sell a lot of water, we're running a profit as we do that, is that correct?
Running a profit.
Are we making a profit on the water we sell as far as?
We may very well have greater retained earnings in that given year than in another year, and where that will have an impact is when we review the capital improvement plan and the operational costs the following year. If the retained earnings were so great that we're able to do a, or recommend a 2% increase as opposed to what would have been a 3 or 4, that type of thing will tend to ebb and flow as this graphic shows relative to the use.
Look at your pun. That was lovely, ebb and flow.
That actually was not intended. That did work.
That was a pretty good way to keep us on our toes.
So the intent on the water bill?
Yes.
Correct me where I'm wrong here, is when we bill our costs, our, we're basically law-bound to recover the cost of our operations.
Absolutely.
And then we have an additional thing for contingency and whatnot, and that's it.
For contingency, for future capital planning, and capital planning may mean growth or expansion, but it may also just mean you're basically amortizing or depreciating that which is in the ground that you know is going which is in the ground that you know is going to ultimately be replaced.
But that's basically it.
That's basically it.
It's somewhat easy math, and they use the word profit. The only thing we could technically profit on is water sales to other entities, like not entities of our customers.
And it all, as a bottom line, is actually a retained earning as opposed to a profit.
Right, right.
And that, that's IRS stuff, but it's, yes.
And what year did you start working as a town manager?
Two thousand, December of two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. And has there ever been a decrease in the price of water during the time?
A decrease during that period? No. There was a series of years which there was no increase, it was a zero.
And those years would have been what years?
I would have to go back and look at that.
It seems like I remember, maybe about ten years, I started in two thousand nineteen, many years leading up to that, it was nothing. And then that's where we were hit, somebody came up like, hey, we have all these projects, and there wasn't a reserve.
Two things really drove the increase. And if you look at the change from two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-five, and again, I'm, I'm just speaking from memory here, but what has gone up significantly during my tenure here has been the wastewater, far more than the water. And in large part, that was when the county did the expansion at Adore of the wastewater plant. The, the towns that feed into that plant over consecutive years, and again, this is, it's been a number of years ago now, and it's off the top of my head, but I think we took forty percent, forty percent, and twenty percent increases in the bulk rate that we paid the county to treat that water. So our rates to our customers to, to make, our account's balance had to, to go up with that.
So the county-
The other impact, I'm sorry. The, the other impact on the water side is that there was a, a pretty sizable portion of the system that was replaced and updated prior to my arrival, and had actually been, it might have been the first year I was here that we made the last payment on the bond on that. It wasn't very long after I got here. So there was a period where there wasn't any debt service where there had been before. Then we started to incur some debt service or started paying cash for some of the necessary replacements and things that were coming due. So there was a period in there where it was zero, and, you know, armchair quarterbacking retrospectively, it might have been nice to have been doing one or two percent in those interim years versus when bills started to see some of the fours and fives. But again, that is ultimately a council decision that is made at budget time every year. And part of the challenge and the reason that so many utilities in the state of North Carolina, if you take a look at the treasurer's watch list, which are governmental entities that are not meeting their financial needs, a large number of those are actually small rural utility systems, and in large part, it's because of a political unwillingness to charge a rate that actually pays for the system to operate. You know, that's, there isn't another utility, if you get into your non-public utilities, you see the rates that, that Duke Energy or Time Warner Cable or Century Link, Bright Speed. I mean, you think about the growth in those utility rates over a period of time, and they far exceed anything you're going to find with most public utilities, because it's just a different process of how those rates go about getting, getting set.
Do you remember that chart that James showed us during the budgets about?
The Waterworth spreadsheet?
Really valuable.
Yeah.
Because it shows the impact of basically not doing anything on capital expenditures down where, where the line drove, Doug. He has a, it's really good. I mean, it helped me.
So the only game in town as far as wastewater management is the county with the Adore?
Wastewater treatment, yes.
Yeah, wastewater treatment.
That is correct.
The only game in town for everybody in the county is the county, and the county sets those rates pursuant to state mandate or pursuant to their-
The county sets those rates in the same manner in which you set a water and sewer rate here in town.
Right. But the county, at the same time, is now interested in buying water from us.
County is currently buying water from us. The exploration and conversation is around whether they buy additional water in the future. And under, they, they have an interest in buying more water today, but under one, what circumstances would the town council be willing to sell them more water is, is really the crux of the question.
When the county buys water from us, do we then pay the wastewater management fee for the water that we have sold to the county?
No. If we sell it to the county, it leaves our system, it enters somebody else's distributions as well, it enters the county's distribution system, but then it flows into the county's wastewater. Where we are, what the town is paying for wastewater treatment is basically metered at a number of the county stations, and it, they are, they are basically collecting not only what goes down your faucet when you turn the water on, but also any I and I in the system. So when we've talked about, and we've been undertaking a lot of these wastewater pipe replacements and manhole rehabilitations, that is all in an effort to not flow rainwater or stormwater, based on our last conversation, to the county, because they're treating it just like something where you flushed your toilet or, you know, turned the, the kitchen sink on and it went down through. So the more of that we can keep out of the system, that's at least a gallon, every gallon of water we don't put in the system through rain.
That's a savings for us.
It's something we're not paying the county to treat.
Does the county pay, or do the taxpayers of the county pay the same rate for wastewater management as the town of Southern Pines pays?
So let me, let me back up and say, be careful about term taxpayer, because these are all enterprise funds and are supposedly supported by the fees that are, that are charged. The county sets its own wastewater number. So what the county presumably is covering the cost of is, A, their collection system, so just like we have a water distribution system, we happen to have a water treatment plant that feeds the water into that distribution system. The county has a wastewater treatment plant, they also have a wastewater collection system, and that system is everything that lies outside of the communities that maintain their own collection system, which is going to be Southern Pines, it's going to be Aberdeen, it's going to be, I think VAS is tied in now, maybe, or is that all, that's all county now?
But they don't set different rates depending on where the person lives?
Well, actually, at least with the water, they do, because they've got separate districts in water. I don't know on the wastewater, I mean, they don't set separate rates to their, it sounds odd to call it bulk customers, but I'll call it their municipal customers. Like I, we, we pay the same rate that Aberdeen pays that another community flowing. I, I'm specifically not saying Pinehurst, because Pinehurst has no utility system. So all of the lines in Pinehurst, and, well, with the exception of, I think they've got some small community-owned systems, but all of the lines in Pinehurst that are public, I believe, are owned and maintained by Moore County directly.
So if we sell water to the county for any, for any region? We do not receive any benefit as far as a reduction in our waste management fee with the county?
Our wastewater fee, no.
Okay.
No. Again, because those fees would be, just as we separately calculate our fee, water and wastewater, that the county's going to be doing the same thing.
And wastewater isn't enterprise fund?
Right.
They also don't pay any wastewater fees on that water that we sell to county.
Right. Yeah, I asked that question, and you ask and answer.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. So again, the, the withdrawals thing, there's, there's reasons for those spikes, a lot of it can be weather-related. If you could go to the next one, BJ. All right, the treatment plant, this is the next part of the equation. So we've talked about the raw water coming from Drowning Creek and how much we can withdraw at any given time. At the plant, again, we have a permit that says our physical output can go up to eight million gallons per day. So that is not to say that we couldn't go ahead and treat nine million on a given day, but that, if you'll remember, there was a peak day, and then there was that average day over the course of year. Our average day over the course of year should not exceed eight million gallons, or we're going to be in violation of our state permit. The actual ability of the plant is eleven million gallons a day. So our permit says eight million gallons a day, but what is on the ground there relative to the treatment ability is eleven million gallons a day.
So I'm going to change that word, at least for my mind, would that be the same thing as like installed capacity? Like we can without changing equipment or?
Just get another permit?
That is absolutely the case. Now, there are, and, and James can go into the detail on this however much you want, but there are some things that if we really did intend to get to eleven million gallons, or if we wished to get our permit bumped from eight to eleven million gallons, there are some things we would have to install to be able to do that. But it's not, it's not going down and building an additional, what we call train. If y'all remember your walk around, when we stood up on top and we said, there's room over here for a third and a fourth if ever needed. We would not have to do that, but it has more to do with the sludge beds and just some of the pump capacities and, and things like that. Did I miss anything major beyond the sludge beds and the pump capacities, James?
Yeah, and honestly, I don't even know if we would have to do the sludge beds to get permitted for eleven. That becomes more of an operational concern as, you know, the, the average flows go up.
Right.
But definitely some of the internal systems, like, you know, we don't need to build a new chemical feed system, but you may need to change a pump out to get the dosage rates.
Right.
You know, something along those lines.
Yeah. So that's our permitting, eight million gallons currently, but what is the capacity down? There's really eleven million gallons as it currently sits. And again, twenty twenty-four, we got to four million gallons a day for the first time. So that put us at about fifty percent of our permit amount and just, just a little over a third of what our actual ability is. There at the bottom, we talk about the raw water storage of being a hundred sixty million gallons, that's twenty million gallons on the small reservoir, and then the town developed, permitted and developed a one hundred forty million gallon reservoir that vastly increased our capacity. And in recent conversations that staff has had with DEQ, they have said that future permit applications and things, they would be every bit as interested and impressed by. Maybe that's, I think that's about the right way to put their attitude about it, but the fact that we have that reservoir now as opposed to just counting on entirely the creek day in and day out, which would have been the case back in two thousand and two and two thousand and seven. So they were very complimentary of, of the town's decision to have done that, and, and very complimentary of our system overall relative to its capacity and, and the opportunities that that presents. So our combined storage is a hundred sixty million gallons of raw, and then we've got eleven million gallons a day potentially of treated water just on current. Next slide, thank you, BJ. So then, just talking about, once the water is treated at that plant, we do have current storage capacity of seven and a half million gallons. Very nice picture and noted here, the, the two million gallon clear well, and you may recall kind of overlooking that when we were standing out on one of those treatment trains, which is just to the left. But that's two million gallons, and that is finished water. It has gone through the entire process, it is chlorinated, it is ready to drink. In addition to that, we've got a two million gallon booster tank down on US One back behind Biscuitville. You may notice it as you drive along US One or sit in line for your morning biscuit. And then we've got three and a half million gallons of elevated tanks, with discussion, of course, ongoing about what we call the north pressure zone, when you think about your capital projects and transfers that we've made the last few years, which is an additional elevated tank in the vicinity of the new, Fire Station Two, I should stop calling it new, it's been there a few years now, but, but that'll add another million gallon in the air to bring our total storage of finished water to eight and a half million gallons, which again, given current average daily usage is a little over two days' worth of water with, with zero restrictions being put into place in the event, for some reason, we had to depend upon that already finished and storaged water. There is a note on the bottom of that, just, those water tanks are really more about, or as much about providing for pressure, making sure there's water on hand if a fire breaks out and you've got to hook up to a hydrant, having your peak hour burst, because if everybody decides to water their grass at two o'clock on the hundred-degree afternoon, you want to have some water on hand and not be trying to produce it at the same rate that they're utilizing it. So, next slide now. So the bottom-line math, and I think this is a really useful slide. You see the eleven million gallons there to the left, that's what we could do. You see the eight million gallons that is our current permit. And then you see our historic raw peak, which again, was a very high number in any given year and had some, some reasoning behind it. Our peak just this past year, so the most current peak was six point four four million gallons. And then you see that our average raw of four million in twenty twenty-four, and the three point five one being the twelve-year average. And then I want to bring, and this Councilwoman Peterson started to go down this path, and I said I would get to it, but right now, we've got wholesale contracts with Moore County, with Camp McCall, with, I'm going to call it Carolina Water, but I know it's got a different name now.
It's still Carolina.
Is it Carolina Water? Okay, but it, it's essentially Whispering Pines. And then we've got some emergency contracts with Aberdeen and Carthage that do not get normal usage but have had to have usage at various times in the past. But those total one point six seven five million gallons and-
A day?
A day. At maximum. If everybody pulled the maximum amount that their contract is allowing for at this point in time, it amounts to one point six seven five, which again, if you look at our twelve-year average, is almost fifty percent of the water we're selling right now. We're doing bulk.
You don't have an average for that number, do you?
For?
For the bulk sales?
Last year, I think we averaged about a million total.
Per day?
Yeah. Or actually, that was, that was twenty twenty-three, actually.
That was a million, that was with an M. Or did you say billion? You said million.
Yeah.
Million. And what's the last time that the Aberdeen and Carthage emergency status was activated, if ever?
Aberdeen, I don't recall.
I don't think we've ever actually done it for Aberdeen.
I think we just mutually put that in place when everybody was putting those types of things in place. Carthage, they had their plant go down, was that during your tenure here, James?
Yeah, we, we've, we've given water, and not given, we've provided emergency water to Carthage a number of times in the last couple of years.
Yeah, they've, they've had occasionally issues with their plant, and I think they've fixed a lot, if not all of them, but we have had to help Carthage out from time to time. So theoretically, if, if we were sitting here concerned about our total capacity and ability relative to just Southern Pines itself and any future growth plans, and that is not the message I'm bringing, if we were, there's one point six seven five in wholesale contracts there that ultimately will run their course, and, and a council could ultimately decide not to renew. I do not foresee the scenario under which, that will have to be a conversation, at least for purpose. Now, you might have a, you might have a partner that a future council doesn't wish to work with and, and cancel for other reasons, but relative to absolutely needing to pull back on those, knowing what we do about our usage and our growth, that, that really is not a concern at this point in time.
So let me just ask you another one more question.
Sure.
Using average numbers that I've seen here?
Mm-hmm.
We have roughly four point five million gallons per day. That's the eight millions a day that we can technically treat, minus the three point five one average, gets us to about four point four nine million gallons a day. We have four, based on averages, we have about four and a half million gallons per day of excess capacity.
All of your math is good, however, the three point five one number that you just used is a raw withdrawal, not a treated water usage. So that's the only thing that, yeah.
That's where I'm wrong, yeah, okay.
Yeah, instead of that three point five one, I think you would want to use, for instance, well, actually-
It'd be like three point two.
Yeah.
So more.
A little bit more, actually, but-
Generally speaking, you get about a ten percent loss between your raw water and your actual treated water.
Well, the eight million is the raw water, right? The eight million intake?
No, we're talking about actual, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I'm taking the three point five one, which is your raw one, raw water, right, out of the eight, which is raw water. And so we have four point five million gallons per day of raw water.
Yeah.
And with a change in permitting, we have seven point five million gallons of excess capacity, might not be the right word, but, yeah.
That's right, but, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's your delta that you're kind of working with mentally.
Right.
All right. BJ, what is the next slide? Okay, so this led us to the exploration and discussions that have kind of been taking place sporadically for some time now, and, and really for the first time, probably less than a month ago, since late last year. time, probably less than a month ago, since late last year, when Attorney McCarley was in front of you talking about term sheets and the like. So the reason that there's even any discussion taking place whatsoever is that Moore County undertook a study of water possibilities around the county, because they have determined a need to secure up to 6 million gallons a day additional to what they're already selling over time. So not yesterday, not two years from now, but over a long period of time, they foresee a need for up to 6 million gallons additional. We have had for a long time, the longstanding intent to eventually increase our permit from that 8 million gallons to 11 million gallons. There's been no rush, because again, we haven't seen even the peak day exceed the 8 million gallons, let alone the average over the course of a year. But we know it's a possibility. We know it's there. It's in our capital improvement plan and has been for some time. So that was something that when LKC was doing their work on behalf of Moore County, they were looking at Southern Pines and the possibilities. And that number kind of comes into play with some of the thoughts that have bandied about. Within that study, and you've all reviewed it and have copies of it, it talks a little bit about both the current Moore County contract situation. And Aberdeen had already let Moore County know that they do not necessarily intend, or at least cannot guarantee, that they will renew their contract with Moore County when the time comes. There is actually, within that study, a statement or a scenario by which that Southern Pines would not renew its contract with Moore County. That was not because Southern Pines said, we don't have an interest or an intent. It was LKC providing a worst-case scenario in trying to advise Moore County on what their options were, because it is a possibility that a future council would say, yeah, Moore County, your contract is up and we don't wish to sell to you anymore. So that would certainly not be our recommendation at this time for all of the number of reasons that you saw on the last couple of slides. It is a benefit to our bottom line to be able to sell them that million gallons a day. So there is a scenario then, within that study, that talks about creating a second intake downstream, which could result in Southern Pines potentially selling the county more than the 1 million gallons a day. That led to follow-up thoughts around, well, under what circumstances would that occur? And furthermore, how might we go about getting at least initially another million gallons or another million, another 2 million gallons? Because, as I said, that 6 million gallons is over time. But the first million gallons is going to come, I'll say come due, relative to county needs, a lot sooner than the 6 million gallons a day. Yes.
Let me ask a couple of questions. So the second intake downstream would be below the waste treatment, right? So that would be
Not, the exact location is not known, but yes, it would be below that.
That would be dirty water going in, being treated.
Well, that's actually, that is actually not the case, because the water that is leaving the wastewater treatment plant is actually already treated to a level above what is coming out of the raw water creek.
Okay. So
I know, it's a difficult
No, that's okay. That's fine. No, I got you. That's fine. But it does, but it is, in fact, it would pull from below the wastewater treatment, which you have indicated would be a cleaner water.
I have indicated what is currently being released by the Adore Plant per state permit is a higher quality water than what lies in the creek naturally.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then it all has to be treated by the same standards that we're already doing, where we're pulling from drowning creek where we're at.
So Moore County's study that indicates they may need an additional 6 million a day is based on what? Do you know?
So that study, as I recall, is just based upon the Moore County growth in customers, projected growth, just it's, it's one of those linear types of calculations that they do over time.
Okay.
And again, I think there were some calculations in there that involved, what if we don't get renewals from our current partners? Moore County itself does not, and I don't know this number offhand, James, maybe you do, but between what they buy from us, buy from Aberdeen, and buy from Harnett County, I mean, how much water does Moore County produce itself from its well systems?
Yeah, I don't know that number.
Even as a percentage, I don't think it's
Do they have a treatment facility?
No.
They've got, they've got several groundwater wells, which have some treatment with them associated. But all of their surface water, treated surface water comes from Harnett County or Southern Pines.
Right. So no reservoir, none of that. They're just buying finished product and selling it, reselling it.
So let me ask you this. When we, when we talked, whoa, we talked about evaluating and learning about trash, which we did forever. We spent a lot of time assessing whether or not the GFL was something we wanted to continue with, whether or not they were advantaged moving, learning about far more than I've ever anticipated. I would know about trash and recycling, and for which I was really appreciative, and creating what I consider to be a policy about whether or not we wanted to consider changing the service provider in that regard. And I want your read on just the thought of whether or not to sell water to the county. Do you think that is a policy decision that the council should make as a whole? Or do you think that is a decision that you should make as town manager, whether to enter into those discussions?
Any ultimate contract with the county is going to require a council action, and it's going to actually involve the creation of a contract. So that is entirely a policy decision.
I agree with that.
Relative to engineering firms coming to the town on behalf of other entities and simply exploring what options may be. I mean, our conversations have been around exactly the types of numbers and things that these initial slides have been
Right.
Based upon. So again, I'll get to a final slide here that may get to your question.
I want to ask the question first. I want to ask you, do you think that it is the proper order for the discussions to be taking place about a potential sale to the county prior to the council making a policy decision as to whether or not the council deems it an appropriate response to sell to the county at all? Or do you think, is that
I think the decision to sell to the county has already been made by way of an existing contract. I think that any changes to the scenarios within that contract will obviously and clearly be ultimately a decision of the council. The intent of any conversations up to this point have been two things. One, just providing public information to LKC so that they can provide an educated and informed set of options or recommendations to Moore County. And then, number two, understanding what it might take in order to make that occur so that an informed discussion could be had with the council relative to the options and the pros and cons involved with them.
So you think the discussions with the potential to sell additional water to the county should, should be in advance of having any discussion with the council as to whether or not they think it is a good policy to increase the amount of water that would be sold to the county?
I think to make the decision about whether or not it's a good policy to increase the amount to the county without knowing what the potential pros and cons and outcomes of that decision are, would in fact be way ahead of things. I'll go back to the conversation we held just 90 minutes ago, to come in and just suggest, hey, do you want to sell more water to the county, without details about how much capacity the town has, what its future may look like, what the possibilities are, how it would occur, would be the equivalent of coming in with a, hey, we've got to rip the parking lot out downtown and not at least provide some concepts or options or rough estimates as to what the cost of that is. If you could, go to the next slide, BJ.
I guess my question is, it feels like to me, particularly when Frank Quist comes to speak with us and says, 92% of the people in the county ask that the development be centered in the townships and that there not be increased development and we not forego agricultural lands in the county. Do we take that under advisement and weigh whether or not we want to move forward with something that only 8% of the county wants?
I think it's entirely a question for
I think it's policy.
For colleagues.
Right. I think it's a policy.
Well, also
I would not disagree with that.
Right.
That was the input from the citizens as they were looking to do their comprehensive plan update, which, when we looked at input from our citizens, there were a lot of people who said, don't grow, which is why our, forgot his name, why our Matt, why our Matt, why Matt, our Matt, why our consultant, as we were going through that process, actually put together a slide with, you know, this is what a projection of the community would look like and how it would affect the existing properties if we decide to not grow at all. And I think the county was faced with that same issue, and that is not what their updated land use says. So I mean, I, I think that wishes and desires have to meet reality at some point, and then we use the reality to make decisions about policy.
Word is we. And I do not think that we have all been included in that.
No, I meant our comprehensive plan.
No, but I think
We made a plan on our comprehensive
I think the council needs to make
Okay. The county made their, so that's not a we at all. They made their comprehensive land use plan based on reality. That is, there's no decision on water that's been made. So there is no we that could have participated in it. That's why we're having a conversation.
This conversation regarding water in the county started without any of us.
Without Southern Pines.
It was, yeah, it started with a consultant that they hired to look at their options.
And do you agree with that being the correct way to proceed when it's a policy decision in this town, Southern Pines would make?
I don't think it means anything. I think it doesn't mean anything until these five people speak. I don't think it means anything at all. I think they can do whatever they want to. They can ask questions, they can get the information, but nothing is concrete until we decide that is concrete.
But when they hire
But having the conversation is fine.
When they hired LKC to do the analysis, LKC had to come up with options, and that was, we were mentioned as an option. That is the extent of the conversation.
That's it.
And I think that you're getting real accusational about what you think is happening, when in reality, you just missed a county meeting that we only went to because we were notified that Southern Pines was being mentioned.
No.
I don't mean to be accusational, but I do mean to be informed. And thus far, I mean, I know that you're presenting today because I've asked you to do that, and I appreciate you putting on the agenda.
It's, it has to be on the agenda because the conversation has to start somewhere. And Reagan is doing the due diligence that we have asked him to do. It's the county
We have, the county may have asked him to, we have not asked him to do that.
No, actually, it was brought up a few months back by the council. They would like to have this session. I sent all of you a note that while I was planning to have this session, that the county was actually going to take it back up earlier this month for the first time since 2024. I mean, it literally fell off their radar while they went through the budget process. And that was good with me, because we had our own budget process to do. This slide actually talks about a meeting that we were able to, because back when we were having the discussion to provide Mac with some things around a draft terms sheet, I had had some concerns about language in that term sheet relative to what would happen with our existing intake. So I, my fear straight up was that if an intake were to be permitted downstream, that DOQ may say, oh, but get rid of your existing intake. And if that was going to be the case, number one, it significantly impacts the size that that second intake needs to be if the county's looking to purchase additional water. It also would significantly impact my thoughts and recommendations relative to ownership of that second intake, because if it were going to be the only intake, we need to completely own it, because otherwise we've got a treatment plant with no way to get water, a raw resource into the plant. We scheduled a conversation because with no slight whatsoever to the consult, the consultant for the county, he just said, oh, no, I've spoke with DEQ and hear this, that and the other. And it's not that we didn't believe him. We wanted to hear it from them directly. So we had a, we had a Zoom meeting with probably five or six representatives from DEQ and their various portions around this. Very good, very informative. They were very clear that the current intake is the current intake, and it would not be required to be removed, and it's been permitted, and it's, it is there. So that was an important piece of information to know and understand moving forward, regardless of whether we move forward with the county or not. That was just a good piece of information to have. They also pointed out that the permit threshold at the second intake likely would be lower than maybe some of the county and our original thoughts were on that. And part of that was, they said, the county really needs to undertake a study in the river in order to inform those permit details. And the county is aware of that. And it's something we would require before moving forward with anything. And that's something that the town undertook back in the 90s in order to arrive at those CFS figures and that whole chart that was in one of the very early types of things. So that is kind of step one in the process, and the county will either choose to move forward with that study or not. But ultimately and clearly, if, if the council were to decide to move forward with the county, at no point would we, would I recommend we enter in a contract that says, we'll sell them 6 million gallons regardless of what the second intake would in fact, no way. I mean, at, at the absolute lowest level, it's if they want, if they only get permitted for 3 million gallons, I'd suggest that be the additional amount you cap it at, because there would still be a benefit from a resiliency standpoint to having a second straw in the resource. If something were to happen with our permit, not with our permit, if something were to happen with our intake, at the very least, there would be the second intake that was capable of getting water. That is not a situation that we have now. And it sounds a little crazy, but I actually lived through, very, very early in my career, within the first two years, I worked for a community that bought water from the adjacent larger municipality, that it was pulling from the Ohio River, and there was a boulder on the side of US-1 that released and took out the intake. And we were 30 days of the Army National Guard bringing water in and distributing it to people while they rebuilt a very large pipe down to the river. So redundant intakes are a beautiful thing if you can get them. So
So this intake that you've, the county is speaking of, actually wouldn't even affect the CFS of our
Of ours. None whatsoever. None whatsoever. And that's from DEQ, not just me speculating anything. And those are the types of exploration details we've been after, working toward conversations like this. So I guess the bottom line of that being is DEQ kind of assured us that where we stand right now and all those figures that we went through on those first three or four slides, A, not only in my opinion, but in their opinion, puts us in a good place relative to our current, relative to our current customer base and our future growth. And that is not going to the change as a result of the second intake and choosing to work with the county or not. So if you go to the next slide, BJ. So really, with that, and this, this comes back, the term sheet was, of course, something Mac came in. He's been working with Misty Leland, well, he was working with Misty Leland on that. It kind of went, again, very, very quiet for the last six or seven months. But the big issue that, I won't call it a big issue, one of the issues they came back with when Mac sent that initial term sheet over was the ownership of the intake. I pretty quickly balked at that. Again, that was prior to at least getting the DEQ knowledge that our intake is our intake and we're good. So that, that may be a point that is at least open to more discussion than has been received in the past. And then that, the one thing I would say with that, though, is even if they should own the intake, and I understand their position of if they're going to put the capital into it, they'd like to own the asset. Don't, I don't begrudge them that whatsoever. However, I have made the point that any language should suggest that at least we operate the intake. And that And that is actually mutually beneficial because it's going to cost more in electricity, et cetera, to bring water from the second intake to the raw water reservoir than it is where our current intake is. So, until the day would come that we were actually pumping at the peak of what our current setup can do and where that second intake was absolutely necessary... I'm not saying you would let that intake sit there and not be utilized, but it is going to be beneficial to all parties relative to the cost of moving water and then getting it treated if you utilize the closer source when the river is flowing well and it's readily available. That's a decision that I would want our plant operators, currently David McHugh and Suaz, to be making as opposed to him having to call the county up and say, "Hey, can you turn the valve on?" And I'm being a little facetious with this, but, you know, we'd like to get some water from you in order to be able to sell your water out the other end. It just... It would be a more efficient operation if those decisions were being made in one place.
So, Reagan... Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. So, Reagan, what would be the worst-case scenario with the county owning that second intake spot? Cost-wise, it's kind of beneficial for us maybe, but what's... Because, I mean, that strikes me too, and I'm looking at, okay, so the county's going to own this. So, what's the worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario... I mean, it means that the money that they put into it, they're going to be able to show an asset on the books and depreciate it over time. It does give them a resource if for some reason they ever wanted to try and build their own plant or something, but that's... Wow. I'm glad Mac's... Mac's got quite the background in all of this, too. But I'm trying to actually imagine what... Knowing what we do now about our own intake, I'm not sure there is a worst case, but...
The worst case is an intractable fight between the county and the city that results in litigation, and we're tied up trying to figure out who has control and what does ownership mean and what does operation mean. It would be better for us if we had ownership and operation, but there are a lot of water systems across the state that have this kind of split ownership and operation mechanisms, and we just have to be very detailed about the agreements we've got and how they're resolved.
So, we're going to basically draw up the contract, though, so we'll be able to kind of specify what happens.
At the end of this, if council wants to, and if the county wants to, we'd have an interlocal agreement between the city and the county for joint use or ownership of water intake and treatment system. And the statutes are very clear about the things that have to be in that agreement.
Is there any... Has there been any discussion or has there been anything at the county level in your discussions about them building their own reservoir?
Nothing... There is nothing in the LKC report that references that. Now, I'll be perfectly honest. When we were discussing with DEQ, sort of the second intake and the fact that it may not generate as many million gallons a day, it was brought up that that might be something the county would want to look at. Now, that didn't come from the county, but it would clearly become part of their conversation with DEQ relative to permitting that.
One of the other issues in this is that if we put the plant where the LKC...
LKC.
LKC study said, you have two things going...
Intake, not the plant.
The intake.
Intake, yeah.
The intake. You're below both the present treatment plant and you're below the confluence of Drowning Creek and another creek. So, you've got a higher flow at that point.
Yeah.
Which is the value for us of having a new intake at a spot with a much higher flow.
Right.
I have a question that kind of refers to that. If we end up in a drought situation where our intake slows and we need more capacity, if they own the second intake, will we have some sort of agreement that we could have access to water from their intake? It's kind of weird.
That's the detail you absolutely get into it, and they're going to have an interest in providing it because our other option would be we meet our customers' needs first and we shut off your... Yeah.
Okay. So, even though they would own it, we just put that in the contract as far as access? Okay.
If you could go to the last slide. I think it's going to be the last slide, BJ. Oh, no, this one's real quick, but again, the capacity's tied to the permit. And what I mean by that is what the county has at least suggested through the LKC study is that an initial additional million gallons would be... So, they're at 1 million. They would potentially go to 2 million if they did the upgrades necessary to get us from that 8 million to 11. So, the 8 billion gallon a day to the 11 million gallon permit would get them from 1 million to 2 million. And again, I say that within the context of all of the current, both raw water withdrawal and use on the other side of treated water. We've got quite a bit of capacity and delta there yet. And then the next step would be, potentially, they look at that new intake before they would ever get any additional million gallons a day. And again, I would tie that number to what that new intake could actually produce as permitted. The other thing that Mac and I included in the initial term sheet was just that some language have to be developed around annexation. This says ETJ consideration. That's really just around the constant state suggestion that they're going to get rid of ETJ. And this really has as much to do with almost a non-compete clause. The last thing I would want to see is we start selling the county more water, and the county turns around and takes a Carolina water bulk agreement from us, selling our water to another user. So, we just want to make sure that we get it in the contract that that's not part of any consideration. And they, at least to date, Wayne has not suggested there's any problem with that, and he understands why it's being asked for, and that's fine. The next slide. So, really, and this kind of comes back to where Councilwoman Peterson started, but, you know, we've explored up to this point now. We feel a little bit better at least about where DEQ might stand on this. The county's got decisions to make, obviously, relative to stream flows, and it looks like inter-basin transfer stuff's being studied again, which may send them back to the table looking at other options. But along the lines, I think, of where Councilwoman Peterson was headed, if council based upon now the numbers you've seen today and sort of the discussion of what our capacity is, what that future looks like, doesn't have an interest in us continuing any conversations, then we've got plenty to do, obviously. However, if council considers... Continues to be interested in this, then we will continue to leave the lines of communication open, and Mac and Misty will go back to kind of the hard stuff of getting details pounded into language. But it's a... And again, I'm not saying you have to make this decision today, but if you're ready to make a decision and want to save us further effort, you know, we're here to hear that, too, so.
Do we have a timeline on what any of this would look like? I mean, I know that there's the... Their study said that they would eventually need 6 million gallons a day.
Eventually, yes.
Eventually. Like, how long does plant improvement take? How long does, like, adding that water intake take? I mean, like, what is the... What's the timeline of this whole thing that we're looking at?
It's not tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, I mean, so for like... I guess that's what matters to me is that-
10 years.
Yeah, we've got excess processing ability now. Does it make more sense for us to sell water? I mean, I don't know. I guess that's the timeline matters.
Yeah, it does.
Short version of a timeline to hammer something like this out would be that we could hammer it out in six months to 12 months. For it to actually happen, short version is five years, long version is 10 years. The county's going to need some more water pretty immediately, though, because they're buying water from Aberdeen at the moment, and that contract may end soon.
And I thought, didn't Harnett County?
They are purchasing water from Harnett County, and they actually bought capacity in the Harnett County plant.
More in Harnett County said?
I believe LKC's study says that Harnett County was not interested in selling more, but I do know that at least the position of the county commissioners previously, having sat through the study report out, the public meeting that was held, the county had a real interest in not purchasing from other counties if at all possible and having some ownership or skin in the game, so.
Harnett County, what they have, they have. It's not going away, but my understanding is Harnett County had no interest in taking on another expansion project to get them more capacity.
So, the 1 million gallons a day that we currently sell, more county, and then the slides show 6 million gallons a day, is that total 6 million or is it 6 million plus 1 million? Six total.
Six total, yes.
Okay. So, it's five more.
The advantage that we haven't specifically put on the table is that we're going to need more water in the future, too, and it would be nice to have a financial partner as we move forward to do that. The economies of scale make it very worthwhile to have a partner in a project that gets expensive like a new intake and an upgrade to your treatment plant.
And I can also conceive that we have $160 million... $160 million gallon reservoir, and the next reservoir, we don't have to build if we need additional reservoir space because we've already got one. And so, to get on parity as far as reservoir space, then we can avoid that cost. There's one more question I wanted to ask you about cost. Is there any different rules for the county for operation of their water treatment facility versus the town?
No.
No bonding differences, no... Okay.
Mac... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Oh, you're good. Go. You first.
Have you already started, you and Reagan, kind of mapping out what kind of language you're going to use to formulate this contract?
We are at the highest possible level, the tops of the tallest trees. We are nowhere near details.
Start of that for Mac, but again, there's... I'm not going to say there's template language out there because every one of these is unique in its own way, but relative to the legalities, there's some template language out there, and Mac's been involved in actually writing quite a bit of it.
We're at just the biggest issues. Where would it be? How much capacity are we looking at? Who's going to own it? Who's going to operate it? We're literally at that level to see if we and the county would still be interested. And at some point, when we get a little bit more response from the county, it makes sense to bring it back to y'all and say, "Here are the broad parameters of what the county might be interested in and that we could recommend for you. If we can't recommend it, we're going to come tell you that. If the county's not interested, we'll come tell you that." But at the moment, we're still in that early stage of the dance to figure out, is there a parameter that meets their needs and our needs and works? It's the tops of the tallest trees.
I think what I would be looking for is, first of all, I mean, we are elected to make decisions for Southern Pines. We had a discussion about what does this mean for the county. That's not the filter that I'm looking at this for because I'm not a county commissioner. What's going to help Southern Pines the most?
That's right.
If at all. So, what I'd like, and maybe it's in here, but three and a half hours in, I may have missed it, but like a bullet point, like, okay, this... If this were to move forward, it's going to increase our capacity. It's 10 million of improvements that we don't have to pay for that we would anyway. It's, you know, yes, a second intake. I just... Bullet point of how this helps-
Pros.
-us because I do think as elected that that's our objective. How does this help Southern Pines? If it byproduct helps the county with what they're elected to decide about, I'm not even... That's not even in my purview of what makes this a good or a bad idea.
I agree. Is to have increased capacity for the future and a financial partner to make it happen.
And I want to know if we can lower our water rates? I mean, if there are economies of scale and we're processing more water using the same plant that we already have, there should be some potential of lowering water rates.
Or treating it.
I'm not... I was going to say, I'm not going to go so far as it's going to necessarily lower water rates. It may-
What are county water rates?
It may lower the necessary... The future necessary increase in water rates based upon ongoing increases in electricity and treatment costs and those types of things, so.
I think that Mr. Page hits policy. I mean, our goal is we represent... Our constituents are the citizens of Southern Pines. And what is the best for those citizens? And I think that's a step we skipped.
I think that Reagan has actually been working really hard to get that step actually under our foot.
I would love... And that's fine. And if that's true, I would like to be captive...
It's not... Let's not... I know. The "if" is true is not acceptable. It is true, and I appreciate the work that you're doing, but I do not like the accusations that are flying during this meeting.
I would like to be captive. Breath to what's going on.
Then pay attention to the county level, and you will understand what's going on. That is all that's happened outside of this meeting.
I know nothing more than what I've heard today and what I've read in the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if it's not an emergency, please stop typing on your phone. Thank you.
It actually was to take care of my home, so thank you.
Okay, then if it's an emergency, I understand. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the outburst. No, I do...
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really...
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to... I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I... Okay, 6:30. Update.
And round table.
In closed session.
If you want to. Just an additional...
Thank you.
This is the morning.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county? Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to I appreciate the information.
It's a great informational session. I do appreciate it.
Your input.
I'd like to propose a quick break, please.
I, okay, 6:30. Update. In closed session. Thank you. Let you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the outburst.
Thank you, Reagan, yeah.
No, I do, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Page said, we've all been working on what's the right thing for our citizens. And I know that it's a long game we're working at, so I think at this point in time, what you all need from us is, do we continue walking down this road to figure out what the county wants?
So, I want to talk about that for a second. One of the things I heard was, you haven't heard much from the county recently. Is that, is that still true?
That's correct.
So, why don't we kind of just pause and wait till we hear something from the county?
Yep.
Because it's really
There's nothing for us to do until they get back to
I have November 6th, which is Veterans Day.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep.
All right, 6th. All right. Right now, do you need a motion to continue?
Oh, no, no, no. That, that a public hearing's already been continued to the September 9th. I'm just giving you a heads up.
Oh, okay.
It's coming on, it'll be on the agenda September 9th, but I'll probably prepare the packet anticipating a continuance again.
Okay.
Some more quick updates on comp plan implementation, obviously with the loss of Elena, who was our senior planner, who was coordinating most of the long-range planning implementation. The housing project is still moving forward. It's a little bit delayed. It's moving a little bit slower. The accessory dwelling units is also part of that, both of those. But those are moving forward, including the work of the housing, um, group that informed us. We're writing a text amendment for what's called, we're going to be referring to as minor one, minor two, and minor three. And so I'll keep you posted on that. But those, just that, just wanted to give you a heads up that those are moving forward. The other thing that was on the agenda was the multimodal planning grant. That was applied for in April. The notification date on whether or not we were successful in that was supposed to be June, but we have not heard back yet. So they're just a little behind, but we're still waiting to hear back on that. As far as the September agenda, in addition to the item I just mentioned, which is the text amendments coming to you, you will have an annexation public hearing. You will also have a public hearing on text amendments for, uh, changing the process for amending CDPs so that all the, uh, all of the landowners within the CDP boundary no longer need to consent to the application to amend it. That went to planning board. You will also have a major subdivision review for seven lots on East Indiana. You'll have a conditional zoning district for Clark Street Town Homes. You will have for the Peenick CDP, the, there will be a check-in from town staff. The check-in was a request to, on the mayor's starred items to kind of check in halfway between, because the, the hearing was actually continued to the October meeting. But Mason will give here, be here to give you an update on how things are going with the community over there.
Thank you.
You may have two petitions for acceptance of roads that are kind of in flux at this point, one of which is a portion of Carla and one of which is a portion of Air Tool. And then there are, there is presently one vacancy on the planning board. We are in need of someone to fill the vacancy left by Kim Wade. Her last meeting was this month. We thanked her profusely for two full terms of service to the planning board, which was great. There are presently two applications for the planning board in your folder under planning board. Neither of them are from the same geographic area that Kim Wade was representing. But there are also two other members of the board who are Matthew Walden and Monica Brickie, both of whom are expiring soon. So we thought we might get them to re-up and, and if they're willing, then put that on the agenda as well and get some appointments taken care of going into 2026. And that is everything. Thanks.
That's a tremendous loss to lose, Ms. Wade off the planning board. Tremendous loss. She's amazing.
Can I ask BJ a question? BJ, I read an article in the, in the pilot about Aberdeen having a working group, or maybe it was at the council level, specifically about workforce housing. Are you familiar with what their discussions are?
I read the article. That's the, that's the extent of my familiarity with what they're doing.
Yeah. I wonder how successful they are or how far. It just seems like sometimes we could probably.
Find out.
They can find out what might be working for us.
Yeah, when we created, uh, back when we created our working group, when we were putting the group together, we reached out to all the other jurisdictions around us, including Aberdeen and at that time. And that was not, that was not something they were, they were working on at that point.
I didn't think so either.
But at this point, if they are going to work on that, then it could warrant any future discussions. It certainly could warrant some communication and coordination with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Greve. Do you have other questions on the planning update? We had a busy September. We're looking forward to it. All right, council roundtable. Councilman Goodman, would you like to get started?
I think I wrote some things down. Oh, I wondered if, if you had any update on the Murray Hill. I know you'd mentioned something about there was a sheet that moved.
Actually, I have not heard back from DOT since we sent them back some questions about their report out on the two, so I will follow back up on that.
Okay. And, um, secondly, I want to commend the mayor for all the hard work she did and having the courage to walk into a building and say, if you ever sell this building, give us a call. I appreciate you doing that. And I think that is going to launch the community into an awesome direction with efficiency for its citizens and for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson.
A few things. Number one, and this may be an MPO question for both the mayor and Councilman Goodman. I've become aware that the little, the little transportation, I think we're all worried about transportation, particularly for people who are completely without. I've become aware that the current transportation system, you have to logistically have Wi-Fi and also have a printer. And you've got to go online to order the tokens, which are $4 apiece, and then, or you have to go someplace which you don't have transportation, so irony noted, and pick up the tokens to ride for the $4 ride to Walmart or to your doctor's appointment. And the current transportation system also ends at 5 o'clock. So if you have a 3:45 doctor's appointment at Pinehurst Medical and you go there, then you're a little bit stuck if your appointment goes after 5:00. So my question is, and just a, a question for MPO maybe, or maybe it's for the council. It seems to me that we should work toward that very limited public transportation that we have. It seems to me we should work toward making that more accessible to people. And I would love to, if, if, if it can't be something that goes through MPO and is funded through DOT, I would love to talk about making some of the town discretionary money available to purchase tokens and to have them at a physical place where people could pick them up. And I, I don't have all the solution in my brain.
I think, I think solutions actually easier than that. And I think it's that, right now, it's the county transportation because we haven't, the MPO has not existed long enough to have our own, I don't know, our acronym, but the, our local transit.
TV.
We'll go with that. There's, there's an acronym to go with it, but we have, we have adopted the counties because we haven't gotten ours in place.
Right.
But the goal is for us to get ours in place and it will be something more like a microtransit program where.
Right, which would be great.
Maybe tokens are not the answers. Like it, it would be more accessible.
Well, tokens certainly where you are required to have broadband, I mean, you're, you're required to have Wi-Fi and a printer are not the answer for people who are struggling.
Those particular details would be specific to the Moore County Transportation, and that's the first I've heard about the tokens.
Right, so I wondered if.
So, but along the lines of what the mayor was saying, there will ultimately be some transportation funds made available for planning, and that was something they just looked at this month. This year, it is running through the Moore County Commissioners because we have not been in existence long enough to.
Right.
Actually receive those funds.
Right.
And I know that more, I know Moore County Transportation has said in a TCC meeting that they are looking at microtransit options and they've also talked about standing back up the, um, is it, was it the A. Pines line or kind of the, the fixed scheduled type of thing?
Right.
Because they just ask for some, um, they ask to have some projects scored for creating some bus shelters and doing some different things towards supporting that. But it, all of this stuff's kind of under current conversation, but as we are aware, if we're waiting on the DOT funding to make it happen, that takes years.
Right, it all takes time. So I'm worried about the person who doesn't have Wi-Fi, who needs to get to the doctor next week. And I'm suggesting that we put, and, and actually the community itself has done a little bit of this. There's a group in West Southern Pines that's put together a little fund and that goes through Alinda. And, and bless them for having done that. But my question is, would we consider a small grant within the town to purchase tokens and to have them available both at the Douglas Center and the town library or places where people could hopefully walk or get to somehow? Or is there some other more constructive way to, constructive?
Are you saying to have those available on a, sort of on a resale basis?
You can either on a resale basis or you, or people who can, who can show a library card and therefore they are residents of the town could, could get five free tokens or whatever. I, I don't know. I don't logistically have it worked out, but when you're dealing with a situation that makes it impossible for the people to receive the transportation that the, that it's put into place.
Yeah.
And I'm asking for your good brains to come with me on that and work toward some solution. It's, it's not okay that you have to get the, you have to, you have to get online and you have to get the transportation.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the challenge is just online access, you've already pointed out the library.
Right.
I mean, we keep the public terminals and stuff there. If somebody is getting to the library.
That's another problem.
They can get online and get a token and print it out.
And again, then I would have something based in West Southern Pines at either Douglas Center or at the area, at the Land Trust.
At the Land Trust, yeah.
And the Land Trust doesn't have as reliable open hours, I think, as the Douglas Center does. So if there, if there was a way that the town, and it makes sense because the town runs both the Douglas Center and the library. And, but, but my point is obviously to make that available to people who need the transportation. And, and I appreciate that the MPO is working toward some solution there. The biggest problems, I've already stated, but the second biggest problem is obviously the 5:00 deadline because, again, if your appointment goes until 5:30.
Right.
Yeah, so, so I would like, I would love for us to be leaders in the area and I would love for us to say, okay, Aberdeen and Pinehurst, here's what we're doing and.
Let's ask the commissioners first. Ask if they have options.
That's what I was going to say. Does the county have a way to provide this?
They run the program and they have funding for it. So we need to ask them if there's a.
It's great, whatever. But I, I also think it'd be kind of nice to, in honor of our citizens, to put our best foot forward and say, we have some discretionary funds and we're willing to put some amount, some amount, which could be nominal relative to.
I think they ought to provide it to our citizens.
Oh, I agree.
I don't know why we have to pay for it.
I certainly agree. I just, I don't want, I don't want the fact that we're not willing to put $5,000 on the line from our discretionary fund. I don't want that to stand in the way of somebody receiving medical treatment or.
Let's just not pay for things twice.
Or getting to, I understand your point, but I also understand the urgency that people are, are needing to move with. And, um, and I would love for us to show some leadership in that regard. So putting that one out there, not sure where it will go. Appreciate what you're doing on MPO. Thank you for that.
Would you like to take the recommendation to a county meeting?
I'm happy to do that.
That would be the, the first step probably.
I'm happy to do that. I think the first step may be we're willing to do a matching grant. I mean, what, how do we put our best foot forward? How do we say citizens, I mean, I guess before I go to the county meeting, I'd like to know where the rest of the council stands in regard to, do you support?
What I heard was convenience or inconvenience is, is more of a problem than the fee.
I think everything's a problem. I think $4 is actually a lot if you're struggling to figure out how to dinner.
Yeah, but.
I think both of them are a problem.
Equally a problem, okay. Well, I was thinking, the problem we were solving was trying to get it.
All the above, but I think that if you are, I think if you don't have Wi-Fi, the chances are solid, you don't know what you're going to eat for dinner.
Right.
And as, as public services are cut back, I just think it's really important that we provide.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit briefly about what I know about the microtransit stuff too. I do think that's a, it's coming. I don't, actually don't know by the time we get to that point if microtransit will actually be the solution. It seems to be the solution now. We might not be driving our cars by the time the solution comes here. But we were met with some folks at DOT and BJ, and that's where we got the idea for this multimodal grant, right? That you applied for? Is that the one that you applied for?
The multimodal grant that we applied for is the, it came out of the comp plan, which was the complete streets audit.
That's the one, that's not the.
On Pennsylvania.
Oh, is that not the one that we met with those folks and said, comes out in February?
No, the, the multimodal grant was in the comp plan and it was to.
Okay.
To use that money to do a project, which was the, again, the complete streets audit for Pennsylvania.
So there's a success, successful program in Wilson regarding multimodal. And mayor and I have talked about riding up there and meeting with them to.
Microtransit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also.
I'm sorry, microtransit, yes, and, but we just haven't gotten to it, but.
A couple of people from Pinehurst actually just made that trip.
They did?
Yeah, Councilman Taylor.
They're interested in it?
He went to Wilson. And Doug.
There's also, at the moment, there is a, um, a community program in place. There's an organization in town who is supporting Southern Pines and I would love to be able to say, we support what you're doing and it may be just a baby step, but I would love to have some money, wherever small it might be, um, to say, here you go, and, and you have a distribution on tokens or take over and say, yes, the tokens would be distributed through, um, the two town facilities.
I think there are probably a lot of good community organizations that would, that would put their hand out and ask for money. And I would like to make sure that if Moore County is responsible for a public transit, that we ask for them to step in before we start handing out money to, to every organization.
I do know that the county has been approached in regard to this.
Okay, good.
And that's fallen on deaf ears.
Well, then we should follow up on that.
Just to dovetail on, on what Councilwoman Peterson said, there was a time when I moved here to the town and my husband passed away shortly after we moved here and I had no transportation. I didn't have a job. I was taking care of my husband. I had to quit my teaching job and blase, blase, blase. And I also had reached out to the Moore County Transit because I said, well, maybe I could, you know. So more than it was a, a financial hardship, they only take you to things like doctor's appointments and whatever. What if you got to get to the store? What if you got to get to the laundromat? You know, so, um, that's, that's no, another whole thing. What I've noticed, because I see a lot of people walking, um, people usually use friends, you know, hey, can you drive me to the store? I did at that time because it was, there was no discussion like this going on. I've also noticed on the area that we have a lot of cab services. Pinehurst Taxi Service comes through West Southern Pines and there are a couple of other cab services that come through. I do not know what they charge. I know they're picking up people because they're, they're constantly coming down streets. So, um, uh, definitely what you're saying, Councilwoman Peterson, is, is definitely a need. It seems that people have managed to work out things for the time being in their favor. And there, there are a lot of organizations in, particularly in West Southern Pines that are there to try to help various residents in particular situations so that if you gave to one and you didn't give to the other 30, it'd be like, why? Why didn't you give, you know, so, yeah, it's going to take some.
Which I think is a legitimate argument for giving to two town-owned entities, the library and the Douglas Center. I think that makes sense to not include that with, and I agree with you, there are multiple organizations doing, doing great work. So I would like, I, I'm really bothered by this. I would like for us to be leaders on this. I understand your argument that this is a county program and they should fund it. And I'm happy to go speak to the county and I know that others have gone before me and, and there's not been any action there. But I'm happy to go to the next county commissioners' meeting and, and make that plea. But I, I, I also understand there are people trying to get to the doctor.
Yeah. That's, um, and so when you talked about the, the cabs, the microtransit system would work more like a cab or an Uber system that's subsidized by the MPO, which is ultimately the goal. Yeah, it would take you to not just one place, but yeah, wherever you need to go.
Door to door.
Door to door.
Right, right.
And more affordably than a bus going to each stop and picking up.
Right. Right, so if we could, if we could work together trying to solve that problem, that would make me really happy. Sedimentation, I'm getting calls every week about sedimentation and in yards washing away, and I appreciate it very much. The sedimentation 101 that we received tonight, thank you Jessica for that and others, I think James, you were largely authoring that. Thank you for that. I would like for the next work session for us to have, um, an overview of what legally, I'm asking Mac, legally, what is it that we can do and should do and, and are able to do? And, um, I think that different rules apply based on different storms and I'm, I'm, I'm intrigued with how we decide something as a 500-year storm. But, um, according to the storms, apparently I'm about 1,500 years old this month, so. I also am interested on, ironically, um, setting a deadline for when meetings end. I think that the last meeting that went on for six and a half hours, which this meeting's apparently going to arrival, I think we get to a point where we're not making good decisions or, or being very thoughtful and we rush through it and we get punchy. And, uh, I think that it is within our power to set a time at which we would dismiss meetings and I think that we should entertain that idea.
I think if we're, go ahead.
And I think that that should be a group discussion at the next work session. I'd love to have that on the agenda. You guys answered my question about Pennsylvania, hopefully opening mid-September. Thank you for that. I want to do a shout out to Jay, to Mike Cameron regarding his conversation with and connection with the Dreams For All Foundation and Juliana West, who's doing great works with that, with Kevin Moneymakers Foundation. If any of you know of people who are in need of, who have had houses burned down or are in need of new mattresses, this is a foundation that is producing new mattresses for people if they need them. And finally, I think BJ and I had a really interesting conversation about the Bike Ped Group. Three or four of them have contacted me and I think that I would like to have a council policy about what our expectations are regarding, regarding Bike Ped. What is it that we're trying to do? BJ obviously brings with him an incredible expertise from Whitefish, I think I have right, Montana, yes, and all the things that happened there. And I, I think we have a committee who does not have very clear policy direction from us and would really appreciate that. So I think our thinking caps and our policy issues in regard to that would be great too. That's it.
There is, BJ, there's a policy 9.1, 9. something about Bike Ped. Isn't that, I mean, can you, do you remember that number?
Boy, I'm going to pull it up pretty quickly here.
I was a bit already interested.
The issue of multimodal transportation is addressed fairly heavily in the comprehensive plan. If you give me just a moment, I'll get it pulled up here.
I, you don't actually have to if you don't want to. I was just thinking that some policy does already exist, so maybe we just need to either outline that for them or bring it to our next meeting and make sure that we all are aware of, of what the goal is.
Right. What's the goal? What are our expectations? Appreciate them serving. How can we support them? I think they're floundering a little bit. I've had three members of that committee contact me and, and want to chat about that. So that'd be good.
Yeah, it's Goal 8, which is improved transportation safety, mobility, and travel options. And policies 8.1 through 8.9 are all built around the issue of transportation and what the town's policies will be regarding transportation in the future, including all manner of things.
I think that'd be great. If we could review, if we could review that and then if we could give clear direction, that'd be great. That's it.
When were those written, BJ? Was this updated in our last comp plan?
Yes, these were written going in the, these are in the 2040 comp plan, which was adopted at the end of 2023.
Okay. I would, I would hesitate to rewrite something or review something that was less than two years old. But we can, if you want to send it to all of us, we can all look over it. Regarding the timeline.
I'm not suggesting we rewrite it. I'm suggesting that we communicate with those people on the committee as to what their expectation is, because I think they're a little bit unclear about that.
Okay, do you want to send it to the Bike Ped Committee?
Pardon?
Maybe send it to, I'll send it to Bike Ped Committee. Regarding a timeline on the meetings, I'm not going to go too far into it. But I think that if we will all review the procedures for the meetings that we updated or that Mac updated and we agreed to, that maybe our meetings could be more timely if we follow those procedures a little bit closer. Bill, what do you have? I'll come back to my roundtable.
I have nothing today.
You have nothing. We've already discussed all of it.
I want to make mine quick. After the last meeting that we had, last business meeting, I decided to take a trip over to the area where Peenick was. And I just wanted to look for myself and see what I saw. Of course, we had a good sizable rainfall the day before. So when I got there, some guys were scraping up dirt. I could see where they had, the dirt obviously had run down from Peenick and was headed across the street, but it didn't really get all the way over there. It was kind of more in the middle of the street. I decided I would just kind of float around and drive around and just see some other things. I even got BJ on the phone and asked some questions about, God, I can't think of the name of the development that they said they're glad to see kind of done away with. Yeah, Shibou, that's it. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, it was, it was a good trip. It's, it's great when residents bring their concerns, but when we as a council kind of see with our own eyes what's up, it, it just added to my, my information base. Big praise to Courtney, Mike, Jessica, Beth, DJ, and everybody, BJ, all of you, town staff, Reagan. Y'all are par excellence. Every meeting, I have greater respect for you and what you do. Reagan and I have a conversation we're going to have, and I can't peek y'all into it all. But I'll just say that we're, we're interested in doing all that we can for the residents of Southwest, West and all of Southern Pines, just in terms of, of just making things as easier as we can in certain ways. We were trying. So anyway.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Couple things. I guess I'm meeting with the auditor tomorrow. We attended the ComStat meeting last Tuesday. If you all are interested in sort of police updates, those happen every other Tuesday. We just have to make sure that more than two of us are never there. But it's good to hear sort of how their patrols work and how they report and how we're working with our, our neighbor communities. The popsicle patrol, is that what we called it the first time? Was actually a, yeah, was a great success. And I, I'm happy that I got to participate in it. I had given the recommendation to staff that maybe it would make sense to do the same thing, but with, rather than the fire department, to do it with the police officers. So we're going to do that tomorrow as well. And last week, I was able to go to Fayetteville with BJ and James from our planning department for a rela, presentation. It was really good and had a lot of stats from Fayetteville, not Fayetteville, from Fort Bragg, on just updates to, to the installment. Did you get the, the thing I emailed forward you? Yeah, Zach, Zach sent me just his presentation. So if anybody wants the stats on kind of what's going on or what the base does, I've got a copy of his presentation, and now BJ does, too. I think that's it. I'm sure there's things I'm forgetting because that's only a week, but there'll be more. All right. Unless there's anything else from roundtable, we will move into closed session. We have no voting required after closed session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we will go straight from closed section to adjourning, the closed session to adjourning the meeting. So at this point, I will ask everyone except for our attorney and town manager to step outside. Thank you all for being here.
Need a motion to move into closed session with the general statute.
Can I?
To move into closed session as authorized by NCGS 143-318-11.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Karen, did you want to, do you want to give us the handout now or do you want to wait for two weeks? Yeah, I was like, if you already have something, go ahead.